You ready? And call us to order, let the record show that this is a special city council meeting, workshop with the Planning Commission, held on May 31st. All members of council are present with the exception of Councilwoman Hershey, who will be here in about a half an hour. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, and if you would, please remember Bob McClellan's mother, who passed away two days ago, in your thoughts and prayers, and also Bob. Thank you very much. The purpose of this is to go through our capital improvements plan for the city, so the city can plan for the next 10 years, it looks like, about what we want to do and what needs to be done. I realize council has seen this list, and it kind of looks like the Sears Roebuck Christmas Catalogue, which is what I thought about when I was going through it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kara Drain, who is the Catawba Regional Council of Government representative, who worked on this with city staff. So Kara, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I would like to introduce with me is Ms. Cothran. And Autumn is the Assistant Finance Director with Catawba Regional Council of Governments, and has worked on your project with me, and I appreciate her being here this evening. I also appreciate the opportunity to work with Charlie, and Katie, and Bob, and all the directors, for the input that they've provided in this project. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time and tell you a little bit of information about the foundation of the capital improvements program, and also talk about how it relates back to your comprehensive plan. And then we're going to spend a lot of time, really, on the projects. And so with that, the first slide really talks about a capital improvements program, and really the method for, it's a method for effective and efficient provision of looking at not only your public facilities and infrastructure improvements, but major maintenance requirements and property and equipment. And it's also in the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling So the positive impacts of a capital improvement program, I'm going to call it a CIP, as the mayor said, it does look sort of like a Sears and Roebuck, a list of projects, but it really has been well thought out and planned. And the reason why, as I can tell you, is that your department directors have provided project detail sheets that looked at projects, capital projects, and also looked at construction projects, and looked at them not only as for what the cost would be to, for the actual capital expense, but also looked at if it was a new capital item, what would be the new operating expenses that the city would have to consider. So you look at, for the CIP, it's a short-term capital construction and acquisition needs, but it also is really a financial strategy, and it's a plan for looking at your capital improvements, and also, as I said, operating. But it's a schedule of public improvements, it takes multiple years to complete, and I think that's key to, when you look at these projects, and you look at the projected expenses, you'll see that, how it falls over multiple years. And also, we're going to look at how it's consistent with your comprehensive plan that you adopted.
Step in there, Doug Burns.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
So capital improvements, they're really looking at costs that are not reoccurring, and usually these are also, they exceed your annual operating expenses, and they're usually large expenditures, and when you look at the value of the capital expenditure, it usually is something that's going to add value to the city's fixed assets. And then lastly, all major physical facility projects, such as building and improvements, land improvements, furniture and equipment, and vehicles. So you can imagine that when we, when we ask the departments to look at their needs over a 10-year time span, it's really quite, it's really quite a task to undertake. And if you, even though the plan is for a 10-year period, really, probably realistically, five years is probably your best bet. That's not to say that the projects that go beyond five years are not relevant, it's just to say that things may change as you go through it, but it is important to look at it over the 10-year period, because if certain things change, if certain needs become a higher priority, then those things may be changed and done in an earlier year, or if your revenues change. So it's just something to keep in mind, that this is a guide. So with your comprehensive plan, many of you in this room were involved in the development of the comprehensive plan for Tika K, and the capital improvement program is really included in seven of the nine elements. And I'm not going to read those, you can see those listed, but it's important to know that, just like your land development code, your zoning and subdivision regulations are tools that implement your comprehensive plan, the CIP is a tool, and because in your comprehensive plan, it has different projects and strategies listed, and so in order to achieve those, of course, a lot of those are capital expenditures. I just have two examples. One is land use. You see the goal requires adequate public facilities and systems, and so this is something that relates back to your public facilities, and how it impacts the land use goal in your comprehensive plan. And then really, the priority investment is very clear, to coordinate capital improvements program and the comprehensive plan, and how you look at your public facilities and targeted growth and redevelopment. And so it's really an important project, and I'm very happy that Autumn and I were able to work on this project with y'all. It's been a treat to work on the comp plan, and then also get to work on the CIP. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie.
As we go through this, one of the things, I want to reiterate something that Kara said, is this is a guide, okay? This isn't the Holy Grail, it's not the Bible, it's not fixed, it's not set in stone, okay? As we get, as we progress through the evening, you're going to see some dollar figures that are probably going to shock and wow you. There's a reason why we didn't send you the dollar figures ahead of time, because we want you to focus on the need and on the why, which I'll have department heads coming up to explain what the need is, which, if you turn to page six, is what's in the green column. In the email that you got ahead of time, there was a short narrative for each need. That was, that is what I'm referring to as the why, okay? The annual budgets that are adopted by city council will determine the year, and what's funded and what's not. But hopefully, as we go through this workshop tonight, your department heads are going to explain the relevance and the need for it, okay? Yeah, it's not really a wish list, okay? This is a list of capital need items in order to continue to be able to provide the services to residents, okay? Services that are either already being offered, or services that we have heard from council, from residents, that they want offered at a higher level, those type things. So you'll hear from department heads as we go through the evening. Is Mark here? Mark is not here, okay. We'll start with IT, information technology. If you want to skip over to, in your handouts, over to page seven, and then picking up, sorry, page nine, apologize. So starting on page nine, you can see the IT departmental summary, network and communication upgrades. And again, this is based on our IT manager's projections, having been thoroughly involved with the city's network infrastructure up at this point in time. As some of y'all are aware, through just different conversations that I've had with you, getting hacked by an external source isn't a matter of if anymore, it's a matter of when. It's happened to us on a couple of occasions at City Hall. Fortunately, we've been able to stop it before it became too bad, but it's still a time-consuming process. Upgrades to our, to our network system, specifically over at the police station, with all the new security protocols coming from SLED and the FBI, which council, we have talked about on a number of occasions, plus setting up a MET circuit, which unfortunately, Mark's not here tonight, but MET circuit basically takes City Hall and our buildings off of the network that the entire peninsula is on, and puts us on our own dedicated network. It helps us from a security standpoint, it helps us from an efficiency standpoint, in the fact that usually about 3:00, 3:30 every afternoon, the internet slows down at City Hall, because everybody's gotten out of school, and they're all on their devices and things of that nature. It really starts to pull the bandwidth that we have available down. It doesn't bring us to a stop by any means, but putting us on our own network is something that we are, we are looking to do, and do see the need in. Any questions on IT at this point? It's not very robust. Other IT needs that are within each department generally are handled not as a capital expense, it's an operational expense that'll come up each year in the budget.
So other network upgrades, equipment upgrades, the normal stuff that you go through in the IT world every two, three, four, or five years are handled out of the regular annual budget?
That's correct. Correct. Computer replacement, software upgrades, software maintenance contracts, things like that are handled in your, in the annual budget for each department.
Charlie, you've done a number of budgets with me, as well as some other folks, and you know when I look at a budget, it's a need versus want.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how I look at budgets. Is this a need, or is this a want?
I think everything you see in this packet is a need, it's just a matter of whether or not it is a priority for council. I've tried to work with department heads, sorry, I've worked with department heads as they've gone through this, scaling it down as much as we can. Obviously, we'd love to be able to do everything next year, but that can't happen either. There's just, there's not enough money to do everything next year, and there's not a need for everything for next year. What they've tried to do is prioritize it, and put it in some type of calendar order fashion, if you will. The security upgrades from the IT standpoint is a need. The MET circuit is probably, I would say is a need from an efficiency standpoint. Does it shut down how we're doing things? If we don't do it, absolutely not. Does it make us more efficient in the way we are doing things, and able to deliver services? Yes, it is.
And when you say 2016, 2017, you're talking about
The upcoming budget year.
October 1st of this year.
Correct.
To September 30th of next year.
Correct.
So based on this $51,000 for the total project, you want to spend $13,000, 12, 7, 5, whatever, next year.
That would be in the
You want budgeted next year.
Correct. You would see that in the budget request as we come to council for the budget workshop. And again, the annual budget for each of these, for every year, is going to dictate whether it happens or not, okay? Right now, this is just a, here's when we'd like to have it happen, but if the budget doesn't support it, then it just kicks to the next year. It's still a need, it's just a matter, the budget's going to dictate when it happens, okay? So I don't want, I don't want, especially city council, I don't want you to think that you're approving a budget, okay? You're just approving the guide, okay? You're having, you're going to have a conversation with department heads as far as, well, I see this is a higher priority than this other thing you wanted, how come you're doing this later than now? And having that conversation, okay? But it's not going, I don't, I don't want everybody to be swayed or scared by the numbers, okay? I want to have more of a conversation on what the item is, and what the need for it is, more so than anything else. Because the, again, and I'm going to keep saying this all night, the budget each year is going to dictate whether or not we're able to do it in the timeframe that staff proposed that we do it, or if it gets kicked to the next year, or two years down the road, or three years down the road. The key is getting it on the paper, getting it on the list, so that it doesn't come off the list. It may have to shift out, but let's get it on the list, so we can, we've got, we've got a goal to work towards, to try to bring that item in, and make that item, get that item accomplished.
I guess this instance, and everybody else jump in, but this instance, I'm struggling with the fact that we're planning on doing this over the next four or five years. If you're telling me it's a need, we need to do it now, it's a security protocol, FBI protocol, security, all of that, and we need to do it, why are we not budgeting for it now to get it done now?
Because the SLED and FBI security protocols are changing yearly.
Okay.
You know, to dump $51,000 into it next year, isn't going to, isn't going to cover, you know, those things, I mean, when we started the FBI and SLED upgrading security protocols, that was, Chief Parker helped me out about a year ago, a year and a half ago?
Year and a half.
About a year and a half ago. And it's already changed dramatically over the last six months. You know, right when we thought we got to the end of it, as we're, you know, preparing for a SLED audit, oh, well, wait a minute, here's some more mandates. Oh, we're not, we're not done yet, okay? So these are some of the initial upgrades to bring us in onto our own network, and then each year it's adding to it.
That's really maintenance.
Well, it's, some of it is maintenance, some of it is continual upgrades.
The question I have is if you started in 1617, do you have to keep going? Is it going to be four years without break, or could you do it depending on what the budget?
That, that I don't know. I mean, we may be able to, and I hate that, I hate that our IT manager's not here, but it may be that after 1617, SLED has backed off, okay, you're good. I doubt that's going to happen, just from the simple fact, I mean, there's people out there hacking the CIA. I don't know why they think that's a good idea, but they do. You know, so, I mean, I don't know that SLED and FBI is going to back down, because it seems like about every six months, they hit us with new standards. Right as we think we're ready for the audit, here's some new standards. I don't know fully that the FBI and SLED see an end in this, you know, which is very disheartening for us on the local government level, but when you're talking about having access to NCIC, which is the National Criminal Database, I mean, that's, I mean, if somebody hacks into Fort Lawn's Police Department, and I use Fort Lawn because it's a very tiny police department, and they get access to NCIC, they've got it for the entire nation. So they're hitting everybody with this stuff to button it up. Cities like Rock Hill probably don't have as many leaps and bounds to go. We did, we thought we were pretty secure, so we made immediate leaps. This is based on information that I've received from our IT manager. I support him, but I think it's an excellent question. It could be that 1617, wow, we were able to make pretty good strides, and we don't have to do 1718. It may be an every-other-year type thing. Yeah, at this point, it's just hard to dust off that crystal ball and see down the road. It's hard to do a 10-year plan. Mayor, you were on council when we did a 10-year financial plan, and it was good for three months. Yeah, I think they spent two and a half years putting it together, and then the economy crapped out. Three months into the thing, it was like, okay, well, we'll put that over there on the shelf, we can, you know, so trying to look 10 years down the road, yeah, it's hard to see next year, especially with what's going on at state level.
Hey, Charlie, I was just going to, if I might, Mark had noted on his sheet that he provided to me and to Autumn and me, is that, he said it's to bring all sites under one monitoring structure to manage from a centralized portal. So it could be that he's thinking about getting certain departments online in phases, maybe over multiple years, maybe, I'm not sure, but I just thought I would mention that, Charlie, since he had that noted.
Thank you.
Charlie, earlier you said, I believe you said, if we wanted to, we don't have to do all these, if we wanted to do these, is that what you said?
What's that now?
You were talking about the Sears Roebuck Catalogue, he says, if we wanted to do all of these, it would obviously be a lot of money.
Right.
But we don't have to do all these, is what you're saying.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, you know, if
And I'm not talking about IT in particular.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't think there's a department head sitting here that if everybody voted tonight and said, let's do them all in 1617. Okay, great, fantastic. Bob and I would probably fall over on the floor, I'm not really sure how you're going to afford all that next year, but staff is identified, and you'll hear, as we, as we get further into this, actually, next slide, I'm going to have Mr. Goble come up and talk through some of his stuff. What you're going to hear is, this is a definite need of the department. Now, whether or not the budget allows for it to happen in the next year, or the next year, or five years from now, whenever we get to that point in time, really, that's going to dictate it. But what we're trying to do is nail down, you know, the needs that department heads have identified, perhaps there are other needs that may come from this group, well, have you thought about this, and what about this other thing? And we're not, we're not really knocking it out of the park with this other service delivery thing, is there a better way of doing that, and be able to have that conversation tonight? Yeah, are there other things that need to be added to this? Are there things that, okay, well, you know what, let's still put that in there, let's put this other thing in there, and let's, let's go price it out, determine a scope for it, and then put it in for the ordinance that council would adopt. But again, this is just a guide map.
So this is not necessarily, right, so this is not necessarily maintenance?
No.
It's upgrades. Maintenance would be handled through the general fund budget.
Correct.
Upgrades, this is an upgrade to the system.
Sometimes, well, it's either upgrade, or it's brand-new, doesn't exist now, okay? Or it's a replacement, too, which would, I guess you could categorize as an upgrade. It may not be better than what we have now, other than what we have now is worn out, and it's time to replace it.
I'm sorry.
You know, like an older piece of equipment, or something like that.
So is this all going to happen, and you're just letting us know that, how we fund it, or what's the, is there a decision process today that we're going through?
This is, this is for y'all to give us input, mainly, like I said, the list that I sent out last week, okay, that was basically this column, you know, the green column, okay, so to speak, right, and it had the narrative to it. That's really what I want the conversation tonight to focus on, more so than anything, is, you know, and I hate to steal some of Tom's thunder, but, okay, his first thing out of the box is vehicle replacement. Okay, well, Tom, why do you need a vehicle, why do you need vehicle replacements? And why are we doing those in these years? Well, because we currently have this many vehicles, and by that point in time, they're going to have this much mileage on them, and things like that, it's going to start costing us more in maintenance, blah, 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 blah. And it gives this group the opportunity to say, okay, well, Tom, and I'm only using him as an example, because he's next, you've only got three things on here. What about this? What about that? I'm getting, you know, I hear from residents around the city, they've got to complain about this. Is there a better way we can handle that? Is there a new software we can do, things like that, to give us input, okay, so that we can go identify with, you know, is there a way to identify that need? Is it a capital item? Is it an operational item? Is it just a philosophical item in how we're doing business, and we just need to change our mindset, you know, and have that conversation now? Yes, there's dollars that are associated with all of this, and those, and that's why you've got these now, is to show you, yeah, it's not free, it does cost money, but at the end of the day, you're not approving the dollars. You're not approving the dollars tonight, when you do first and second read, you're not approving that, oh, yeah, in 2019, 2020, we're going to spend X dollars on these things. No, when we get to the budget workshop that year, and we present you the budget, okay, well, in the CIP, these are the things we're able to get accomplished in the budget we've given you, these are the things we were not. Now, if that council at that point in time says, well, we think it's dire important that those things do happen, and we want to do a mileage increase, or we want to increase fees, or whatever, or whatever the case may be, in order to make those happen, okay. That's a decision that council has to make, but we'll go through it every year, we'll pull this out, okay, what are we able to do? What needs to shift back, so we can have that conversation during the budget workshop?
Is there any way to, if we wanted to, say, strike something out of this tonight? Say, we don't want to go down that path with this thing, or is
Well, let's have the conversation. I mean, I would, I would like to at least have the department heads come up, have the conversation, talk about the why, and let's hear why, the why not, if there is a why not.
Charlie, I see you do have, I was going to ask you about, you know, prioritizing. I see you do have the priorities.
Those are priorities identified by your department heads, yes.
Can you explain me, and this may be a stupid question, but can you explain to me what short-term priority is?
Short-term of being the next two to three years.
Okay. In other words, they have to have it for the next two to three years.
Mm-hmm.
Long-term, what I would say would be
Long-term would be more towards your seven to 10, yep.
Okay. Charlie, I noticed that in the, online, the 2015-16 budget has a line item for capital improvements in there, about $950,000 at least on the website, and I was wondering if some of these are going
For 16, for what year?
2015, 2016.
Current budget year, go.
Yeah, there is a capital improvement line item on there, and the total is about $950,000. So I'm wondering is, is these projects going to stay in there, or like you said, maybe may move over to operations, and is, is that budget going to continue on, and these things are going to drop in?
That's a Catawba part. It's just Catawba part.
Is it just for Catawba?
It's just Catawba part.
But it was capital improvement, and you have a section for that.
Correct.
That's just for Catawba part. So you're wanting to add stuff to that section in the following budget?
No, these things, no, these things will be added specifically to, within their budgets, within their department budgets, or the general fund, or the utilities budget, or the stormwater budget.
So each department will have a capital improvement section?
Which they already do, they have a capital outlay line item.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I was curious about this, if I understand correctly, there's two different systems here you're talking about, where you're talking about network improvements for protocols for security versus the MET circuit.
Correct.
So MET circuit sounds like more of a want to me, because you're saying everything is still operational, except around 3:30, things slow down. Are we talking about a huge expense, and a
No. The MET circuit itself is, what did we get, the price from Comporium was about $6,000 total, one time?
One time.
One time, yes.
Were you envisioning that to occur in the first year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
1617.
I guess it's hard to answer without Mark here, but
Yeah, and I apologize for him not being here.
I'm sorry. Would 6,000?
Not here, smooth loop.
Yeah. 6,000, would that be adequate, or
Yes, ma'am.
Is he really thinking 6,000 for the protocols?
For the, yes, ma'am.
Well, I guess if we have to nip stuff off, we're going to have to decide where the heck that's going to come from, because obviously, we look at this whole, now that we're seeing the financial numbers, I don't know how we can afford all this, even if every single thing was convinced to be a need, a complete need.
Well, again, don't think you have to nip something tonight, okay?
Maybe like prioritize.
You'll, you'll absolutely get to nip it come annual budget time, if that's, if that's what needs to happen. You're by the knowing me.
Who looks, is this department heads that look into grants, cost sharing, city funding, or county funding, who? Or is it just, and are they motivated to actually be looking for these things?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Police Department and Fire Department are probably the two that are eligible for and get the most grants. Do we want to move into development services?
I guess I'm struggling with this MET circuit thing.
Okay.
Okay, Comporium says we need the MET circuit, which is $6,000, which, you know, will increase our ability to not have computers shut down.
Well, it'll take us off of the network that the city is on.
So then, the city can operate 3 o'clock in the afternoon, like we are at 9 o'clock in the morning?
Well, it also gets you away from the just general network that the entire city is on, so there's security measures and benefits to that as well.
So in your opinion, that's, that's something we need to nail?
I would say it's something that we need sooner rather than later.
Okay, so then, this $51,000, we decide, you know, council decides that, you know, yeah, we're going to do the MET circuit in this budget, because we have remaining funds left over in the budget, and we do it. So then, does this $51,000 get reduced?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, does it get reduced out of the 1617, 1718, 1819?
1617.
Because I find that very funny, that those are all the same.
Well, it's divided, he's spread, basically what he's doing is taking a $51,000 expense, and he's spreading it over four years.
So we don't actually know what the FBI protocols, security
I don't know that the FBI and SLED know what those protocols
What do those cost today?
Right now?
What have we spent so far? Because we've upgraded the system.
30?
More than 30.
30 to $40,000 this year?
And last year, too.
So then 30
Now, if they don't come out with any new
30 to $40,000 this year and last year?
Correct.
So then $51,000 is going to do it over the next four years?
You would like to think that we're coming towards the tail end of these things. I mean, we've had, we've had to do a lot of IT upgrades at the police station. It was very much in the dark ages, according to SLED and FBI. We are very much caught up with the times at this point, so we were, we're of the assumptions that we're getting to the tail end of these things. Now, I can't, I can't tell you what their mandates are going to be, but based on what Mark has been told, or what Mark has been seeing through the different conferences and meetings that he's been a part of, we're getting close to being able to be ready for that audit, aren't we, chief?
I think it's a lot of things that are mandatory versus nice to have.
Oh, no, they're
I mean, it's really, it's
SLED and FBI are pushing out, it is mandatory. I think York County actually failed their SLED audit. I think, uh, York County actually failed their SLED audit. Uh, there's, uh, their IT audit, the York County Sheriff's Department did, when they first went through it. They don't really give us the option of these dual and triple authentication login just to your computer system anymore. I mean, they've got key fobs and different passwords, all for one person, just to get into their computer. It has not made it easy. But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, uh, part, part of me is right there with you. Um, but at the same time, when you look at, um, school districts, Ori County School District, um, their records were hacked and held ransom. And it cost them fifteen grand to get their records back from the hacker. Because they couldn't trace them, had no idea who they were. But all of their files got encrypted, and they said, you want it back? Fifteen grand. They paid it. Yeah, now, you would like to think, well, who's gonna do that T G K? We don't really have the missile launch codes or anything, I don't know what they'd want from us. But, we rely so much on, um, on technology these days. Server goes down, somebody's hacked your files, you're sitting there and it's hard to provide that, that service delivery that people have gotten used to, so. Well, and again, and you bring up a very good point, Mr. Nell. This, I, I'm very worried that, in, in even continuing on tonight, because I, I, I feel that we're gonna get too much into a budget conversation. This is not a budget. Not a budget at all.
We understand that.
And we're talking about striking things and.
Right, we're, we're talking, we're trying to figure out how you got to this number. Once we understand how you got to this number on the first page, that's gonna help us get through the other numbers. Just understanding that you've been looking at this for a couple months now, staff has been looking at this for a couple months. We got it last week.
Well, since this department head didn't show up tonight, uh, why don't we skip to the next department?
Fine.
And maybe that'll help, in having them explain.
That's fine.
Tom, you'll come on up, bud?
Got your bulletproof vest on?
No, they're all good ideas, Tom, don't worry about it.
Tom Goble, Development Services Director. Um, I wanna turn this on first.
Yeah, it's on, Tom.
I wanna thank y'all for letting me come up and present my three items to you. Um, mine are a little bit, I think, hopefully, a little bit more cut and dry maybe than the IT item was. But, uh, the first thing I have is a vehicle replacement line item. Currently, three of our field vehicles are 2012 models with about twenty-five thousand miles each on them. And you think, well, that's not much mileage, and I've got a hundred and fifty in my personal car, but, you gotta remember, this is all stop and go driving. It's all a hundred percent, ninety-five percent city driving, and a lot of stop and go, and it's just wear and tear on transmissions and differentials and engines, so, we're projecting out, um, is it twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two that we need the first vehicle? Maybe, maybe not. It could be a year after that. We'll just, uh, have to see how it goes, but, um, you know, our, um, cars are well-maintained. They're serviced when they need to be serviced, so there's no problem on that end. It's just that we're documenting that at some point they're gonna have to be replaced. These are the hybrid Priuses that I'm talking about, so the batteries and gas engines involved. And, you know, Toyota makes a good product, but under this severe duty service that they're being exposed to, we don't know if we'll get, you know, probably at the point that we have on here, they'll have seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five thousand miles on them. So, it, it may be that they have more life, you know, useful life in them, uh, but maybe not. Uh, this is our first round with Priuses, so we're, we're kinda learning as we go.
Tom, do you have any idea when the Prius first came out?
You're talking about the ones we have, or just in general?
No, the Prius itself.
Two thousand and five, is?
Yeah, I'm thinking two thousand and four, two thousand.
They, they were, were.
It'll be interesting to see what Toyota has to say about the, um, the life of their Prius based on two thousand and five.
They're, they're gonna tell you it's unlimited.
Well, it's fine, but, you know, even if you go on a blog and you find out what people are saying about them, maybe that'll help us budget this better.
I researched that.
You know.
Any other questions or comments on the vehicle replacement?
No, we have a few here.
Okay. The second item is a software replacement. We currently use a software package that we purchased in two thousand and six. It was around for about five years prior to that, and it serves us well. It, um, does all of our building and zoning permitting functions. Uh, it's, it's a little bit dated, but it, it's reliable. And, um, the, the concern we have is that the company that provided that software was sold a couple years ago. And I'm hearing at conferences, some concerns with, uh, some of our other sister communities about possible maintenance issues. We haven't experienced that here, we pay a maintenance fee annually to, uh, service our software. We've gotten a good response, when we've had, you know, issues come up. But we're, we're thinking in a couple years or three years, not only with the maintenance issue, are we looking at another software package if y'all approve it? But also, it'll give us the, uh, the functionality to be able to do more work in the field, uh, electronically on tablets. And contractors will be able to submit, uh, inspection requests electronically, rather than having to call on the landline now. And, uh, we're, it'll bring us a little bit more technologically advanced with the new software package. Um, there are packages out there available that also has business licensing in it. Our current product does not, and, uh, it's a lot of, not a lot, there, there's some amount of, uh, manual labor to get the two systems to talk, you know, double reporting and things like that. So if we are able to replace it, we will get a, well, we'll look seriously at a package that would also have business licensing included in the, the building and the zoning and the code enforcement package.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
This, this has to do with zoning ordinance, and I tried it, and maybe I shouldn't do it, like, because I'm the least technical person probably at this table. Can you query a word in our zoning ordinance and pull up, if I said signed ordinance, anything that comes up like, like Charlotte Road does?
Yes, sir.
You can do that.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to show me how.
Okay.
I couldn't do it, I tried about four times, I couldn't do it. I'm looking for sections through the other things that came out of that survey, those people didn't know where to get the information.
Basically, what you have with Doug online is a PDF version, it is not an interactive version, so you can't really do the word search.
Wait, say it again?
You can't really do the word search, because it's a PDF, it's not an interactive version.
Mecklenburg does, it is a PDF.
Yeah.
They make a search of PDFs.
They make a search of PDF, that's not what we had at, at the time. So that's why.
It's not what we have yet, but we will, very soon.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I just think that would be, we have a confusing way of going through our ordinance, it's making nice to query it, that's all. I didn't know that was part of this.
That's not part of this.
Any questions about the software?
Staff, Tom.
This is staff, yeah, this is not part of that.
The third item is a departmental plotter. Right now, the largest we can print off is seventeen by eleven, which is rather small when you're looking at construction documents or maps. Um, if you've been in City Hall, you probably have seen some of our maps with the, the different zoning districts and, um, addresses and things. And, um, right now, we've been, um, able to get these maps and things from COG. We would very much like to be able to produce these ourselves and provide better customer service for our residents when they come in and ask us questions about things. And also, from the plan review side too, on, uh, construction documents, we would like to go more electronic. Right now, we're all paper-driven, and, uh, it, it gets burdensome, and it would be, well.
Easy now.
Sorry, paper man.
We would like to go a little bit more, uh, electronic on that, and then still print them out when we need to, but, um, you know, try to go more digital.
Have you looked at widescreen inkjet printers instead of plotters?
I have not.
Where I work at, we make reams and stuff, and we have those printers, but I don't.
It's a widescreen?
Yeah, widescreen inkjet printers. They'll do everything you're wanting to do, plus anything else you need to do.
I'll investigate that, thank you.
Tom, you said you, you do some of this stuff for citizens of TKD, you charge them for that service?
We do not. Yeah. Any questions on the plotter?
Is the cost, because it's broken out, is this like a maintenance? Or is it twenty-five hundred dollars to buy?
No, it's a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment, and we'd finance it over four years.
Yeah. Generally, if it was something that was ten grand or greater, as we started looking through this, we'd put it in a four-year, you know, lease-purchase type thing. Uh, if it was a vehicle, you know, we'd put it in a four-year, um, you know, that type thing. Piece of equipment, yeah, maybe five years, you know, that type thing, just to spread out from a cash flow standpoint.
All three of my items are based like that, over four years.
The Prius was first introduced in the United States in the year two thousand.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Should I Google?
Any other questions for me?
Questions for Tom, uh, Development Services was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move right into. Tim, you come out of the cave. Come out of the control panel, bud. All right, we're on page fifteen now of your, uh, of your handout. Uh, Tim, why don't you, uh, walk us through page, uh, page fifteen, if you don't mind?
Well, there's a lot to look at there, and a lot of it depends on a lot of zoning and a lot of things that are gonna happen in the next few years. There are some immediate needs and some long-term needs. We have equipment that is, uh, getting old and needs to be replaced. We have needs for new equipment and, uh, some other things that are there in order to keep up with, uh, our growing city. Uh, yard waste processing facility recycling, that's our, what we do with all our brush. Um, that's gonna move, uh, on as needed, it's gonna, as you see, spread out over many years, because, uh, we're gonna need to move that facility, hopefully, as zoning and future things come on board.
Well, right now, if I can, that yard, we, where we're currently taking items, uh, is a leased facility, and that lease runs out in the next year. So we've been actively identifying properties to where we could shift that operation for a long-term permanent basis. Um, and Tim's gone and had our engineer look at a piece of property specifically as far as what the development costs would be, as far as water quality, control grading cost, things like that, which is where your, your four hundred thousand dollar number is coming in from. Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, you are correct. Equipment storage facility, that would be, and as we get more equipment, to spread our operation out, so we wouldn't have to use as much fuel to drive around and serve our residents as our city is getting more spread out. Uh, leaf removal vacuum truck, uh, we have one truck currently, that's a very efficient one-man operation, and we'd love to have two, uh, in the coming years. Uh, landscape maintenance equipment, as our city is growing, we're getting more green area, more, uh, areas of landscape that we need to maintain, so that would be equipment to help do that. We have one cat wheel loader right now that we pick up brush with, uh, with our new demand, and as we annex more, we're gonna need another loader in order to, uh, efficiently pick up this brush. Uh, spreader for the dump truck is for snow and ice, uh, handling the snow and ice when it comes in the wintertime. It'll be a new spreader for the back of a truck, preferably a large-size dump truck, uh, that we could carry more, uh, product in order to spread it on the street, uh, instead of having to go to the shop every ten, fifteen minutes to load up the small little hopper that we have. Uh, street sweeper is, uh, helping out, keeping the curbs clean as, and keeping our streets clean, so, a lot of this debris that collects on the streets, not get into our stormwater system. Uh, trench boxes for pipe repair, as you know, we have, uh, utilities and we have storm drains, and as we need to repair these, we cannot do them safely without trench boxes, uh, backhoe.
Tim, how are we covering those operations currently?
We are contracting these operations out, and it's significantly increasing our costs. If we can purchase the correct equipment to do this safely and in-house, we're gonna save hundreds of thousands of dollars versus having it contracted out.
Hi, Charlie, just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure this is not the only category where this question would certainly come to my mind and others. I mean, this is actually, this is obviously cost of service, cost of serving. I mean, are these, are, are costs like this, have you looked at these, if we consider annexations? And we talked about that the cost of service is minimal, or that it will be covered by X, Y, Z.
Um, Tim, help me out here, your cat wheel loader, to, to answer, uh, Dottie's question. If council doesn't annex anything, would, do we need?
We're still gonna need another cat loader, because this one's got a lot of wear and tear on it. We use it seven, five to six days a week sometimes, um, and it's used all day long.
So to answer, to, to answer your question, yes, ma'am.
So, would it, would it be helpful, and, and obviously not tonight, and I'm not asking you to go line by line, but as you bring these forward to council, these and other things? I mean, we're, we're not gonna be, we have, we're gonna do some annexing, I'm sure, over time, but we're doing less and less. Theoretically, we're doing less and less, because there's not.
Really don't have that much more you can annex, yep.
And, and for a lot of these items, not just on this page, but on others, I think it would be helpful to me at least on council to understand sorting out the needs based on things, like that if annexation is a big thing, that's because the cost of serp or area is growing, then we need to dig, identify what those things are, and if they're not related to cost of growth, you need the cat loader, no matter what.
Right.
It would be nice to know.
Even if we did not annex anything, a lot of these things that we have now are going to need to be replaced in the future, whether it's near or far away.
Yeah.
Uh, so, all these things are either things that we have now that need to be upgraded or added to.
Right, and, and again, I'm not just saying for the stuff that you're presenting.
His is probably the most, uh, equipment-wise, uh, needs-wise. Operations is probably affected more than any other department, uh, from growth. Um, to be honest with you, some of this, I think, is probably catch-up from, uh, Lakewood. Okay, Lakewood is where we spread out our service territory. We moved beyond the peninsula, where we, yeah, now that stuff is starting to come online, if you will, okay? Um, if you look at the city's overall map, you know, what's incorporated, what's not, and what we're up against, you know, boundary-wise, realistically, any annexations that you would do going forward, unless it was a already existing development, is gonna be infill, filling in donut holes, things like that, so you're not taking your service territory, you're not expanding your service territory. Um, you know, your, um, leaf removal, your back truck, probably the biggest complaint we get from November to February. Why haven't you picked up my leaves yet?
Yeah, you've got all your.
Well, I got one truck. He's doing this half of the city this week, it gets your half next week. You do, you like to not have to tell people that, oh, yeah, they'll be by there tomorrow, or the next day, but.
By the way.
So, um, the leaf, the leaf back removal, uh, truck? It helps us speed up our delivery of a service, um, a, a service that we offer now. Is it absolutely mandatory? No, but if we don't add another one, the one that we've got now, probably by the time Tim's got it listed here, is gonna start to have maintenance issues, because it's being run all the time down there, so.
I'm not asking you to go through all these right now, I'm saying that if these things come forward to council for consideration, for budgets, for the real deal, I think that we do need, I need, it would be helpful to see things categorized by, and if then. So if this happens, we're gonna need these, but if this isn't happening, you can take this stuff on, you know, it was, uh, what's his name there? Um, Tom just talked about software, and you know, for building and zoning. Now, that's not as big a ticket item as any of these things, but if we're not building and doing a lot of rezoning, well, gee whiz, is the software we have, is it good enough? And, and I'm not saying that we, we, we live with substandard things, you know, we're a city, you need to function and so forth and so on. But, I mean, those, all of those thoughts have to come into the decision process, I think.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, it'd be great to have all this, right? But, that ain't happening, so.
Just a quick question, not to be a pain, but you made a, a comment which I think is really pretty telling. Can you not, on the items here that we are contracting out, do a cost-benefit analysis? Because council's gonna wanna hear that, in terms of.
And typically, we do that kind of stuff during the budget workshop, as far as where we're gonna save money, bring money down, stop contracting out, because we're, if we're able to do that kind of stuff. Typically, we try to cover that during the budget workshop.
With lifecycle cost, you buy the trucks, and we do this all the time as an architect, and it's your clients, and I think you really should do that, I think it'd be really helpful.
You know, and sometimes it's better to contract things out, because when you hire staff, and you're paying pensions and healthcare and all that.
Right, which is where I was gonna go, include benefits, you know, paying benefits to an employee, if you don't have to do that, because.
Thank you.
And that brings up our next item, vehicle lift. We have to maintain our equipment. We have one lift, and sometimes we have to take a vehicle off a lift in order to work on another vehicle, so if we had two. So, if we had two lifts, it would be wonderful. Pickup trucks are always a needed item. Dump trucks, we need those to maintain the services we provide. Uh, mini-track excavator and the pipe inspection cameras are fifty percent with utilities. Uh, these are things we need to provide our services.
I was curious about what the expectations are of the existing shop. If we find a new location for a lot of this, what will happen with that space? Are you still gonna be using it for certain reasons?
One of the things that I wanted to discuss during our, uh, hopefully during our budget workshop for this coming year, is doing a facility needs, uh, study, specifically looking at operations and law enforcement, uh, as far as where those can be located long-term, uh, you know, looking at our existing city-owned properties. Is there a way to finagle it, make it work for the long-term? Um, I know the tennis community is, uh, would love to be able to turn the maintenance area into a tennis complex, but I don't know that that's the, the greatest and best use of that piece of property. It may be that it needs to continue to stay a, a maintenance yard, maintenance area. Um, yeah, but I'd like to at least go down that path and have that conversation.
Yeah, cause I was just thinking of how many space, I know you're saying that you've identified some locations for potential, the five to ten acres. Are they, and how secure would those be? I mean, how close up would you know those are gonna happen?
For the yard waste facility?
Yes.
But we've got eight point eight nine acres that could potentially be available to us.
Soon.
And I would say that's, it would be relatively secure.
And we have to have bays big enough to maintain our larger trucks.
Operations is one area that I'm probably most concerned about overall. One, because they're similar to the fire department, the toys are not inexpensive by any stretch of the imagination. But I definitely don't want us to get back to the point where we were just prior to me actually becoming operations director, where in two thousand seven, we were driving nineteen eighty-nine pickup trucks that had two hundred eighty thousand miles on them and the rust was basically holding the quarter panels on, you know? We, we need to be able to, um, and we've shown it with, with a lot of our patrol cars, if we're, if we're able to put those in auction and take them offline before that two hundred thousand mile mark, we're actually bringing more money back in for our resale versus somebody that's gonna give you a thousand dollars because, oh, the truck barely runs anymore. You know, trying to keep their, you know, we, we've got a good preventative maintenance program, but keeping this equipment, um, operational would absolutely keep us efficient, keep our service delivery, uh, to, to our customers, the residents. Um, you know, the worst thing in the world is having the leafback truck go down in December. That, that is not a good day for, uh, dying at the front desk at City Hall, because the phone's blowing up. Yeah, but, yeah, here we are, the city's serving ten thousand residents, thirty-six hundred homes, and we're, we're doing it, and doing it very well with one truck, but if that truck goes down, there is no backup, so to speak, you know? And making sure that we can, you know, kinda spread some of that, that workload out on other additional pieces of equipment should help sustain the lifespan of some of these. Um, yeah. Yeah, Mayor, I think I, I may have lied to you earlier. I said, I think everything in here is a need. Yeah, I mean, some, uh, some of these things could be identified as, well, a vehicle lift. You know, Tim says it's a need because it helps us maintain our vehicle, but, you know, we get four patrol cars down there, it's not just one at a time, we can hit them two at a time, you know, changing oil, things like that. A street sweeper, hey, it keeps curbs and gutters clean, keeps out of the storm drains. Yeah, it's definitely functional. It definitely is, uh, yeah, uh, you, I think you could look at it either way. You know, is it worth the expense? Is it not? Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's really, you know, I think everything you're, you're gonna see in here, your department head's gonna tell you, it's a need. You know, but that's part of what we wanna have the conversation tonight, is how big a need do you see this has? Um, the, um, spreader, how much do we wanna treat roads during the snow? Some people say we don't do enough. Other people, hey, we're doing just fine. Keep doing what you got, you know, so...
How are you doing that now?
With a little one. That sits on the back of a pickup truck.
It's a, it's a tailgate mount on a pickup truck and you put about ten or fifteen bags of salt in it at a time.
And you go about maybe quarter mile?
Yeah, maybe.
Before you then gotta go back to the shop, go back up again?
Five or six hills and then go back to the shop.
Right.
That works just fine for me, because I can call and say I can't get out. If you put another spreader on there, then I can't say that.
Oh, you're talking about calling, exactly, the job. So...
So, we say no spreading at all.
So, what do we have? Can we sell that?
Snow days for everybody.
I'll just wait for an hour, so you can call in and then we'll go straight.
Alright, now you're talking.
It may, what may be beneficial as we go through this, um, yeah, or it, to keep, um, respectful of everybody's time tonight, after each department summary page, you've got the individual pages that's got a narrative on it. Um, you know, definitely take time to read through this. You know, if you've got questions, you know, shoot me, shoot me an email. We'll get you the answers. Um, you can go, you can shoot it straight to the department head, uh, for efficiency sake. We'll get you the answers. Um, you know, I definitely don't wanna keep everybody here till midnight tonight by any stretch of the imagination, but, um, I do want, you know, I ask the department heads to show up tonight so that, you know, if there, if there is a question you've got on it, ask them. That's what they're here for.
I, I think one thing that, that this is helpful to me is that a, a large number of these things don't actually happen until two seventeen. A lot of them don't, which means council is now aware that at some point in time, you're gonna, you're gonna buy a truck. It's gonna happen. Some of the bigger ones are the ones you have to question, like run, run department replacements, that kinda thing. But I think this is very helpful, because even though no one's making a commitment right tonight, this year, for, uh, whatever this may be, utilities department, long-term pipe inspection cameras, it's not even gonna happen till, for two years.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's what's very helpful and from, from having served as a planning commissioner, guy at one time, a planning director type of position, I told you so, cause if you don't act at some point in the future, I mean, it's all been laid out, which I think is really good plotting.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's very good.
Yeah, we could do it.
It's extraordinary things that seem to me to be the strategic work that we've been talking about as a community for a long time. The parks, the additional fire stations, the expansions that need, that's truly, I think, from my perspective, strategic in nature, right? The other stuff, a lot of it is, is part of what you do on an annual basis, because we, we do have a capital equipment replacement budget line item every year that's, a lot of the things that are in here. But I think Doug's point is right, and everybody else's point is right. It's good to get that bigger, long-term visibility as to what it's in there.
Excuse me. You can leave anytime you want. You're not, you're not locked into that chair and, and...
Kinda set him in a bad spot, Mayor. He can't get out.
You're not locked into that chair, so you can, you can go anytime you want.
I think he's got some ideas.
But also, for everybody, um, everybody at home, as well as you, in about two days, this will be on the city website. So, you can watch it, you know, in between, you know, what you're doing during the day, you know, and, and even go back and look at what you may have questions on or something like that. And if you do have questions, please feel free to call him. Alright, so, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Cool. Tim, you good? Questions for Tim?
Let him go just one more.
Exactly. How many employees do you currently have?
Uh, ten, including myself and my supervisor.
How many mechanic?
One and a half, one and a half.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Do you need anything from us as far as your badge? Know you're good?
No, I think I'm good.
Alright, come back and visit us again. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tim at this point?
Thanks, Tim. Then why am I getting mauled? No.
Let's move on to, uh, utilities, uh, starting on page thirty.
Good evening.
Phil?
Phil Jolly, Utilities Director. Hopefully, I'm sure everybody else is taking the bullets already.
And they're not outta ammo. I can promise that.
Anyway, if you look on page thirty, um, I tried to look at it as strictly a need, right? There's a lot of things I'd love to have from other places that I've worked at that has that equipment. But try to look at it strictly a need, of course, beginning, be an additional service truck. My hopes are, over the next two, three years, to add additional employees. And with that truck, or with those employees comes additional vehicle to get those people around to service this year. Uh, the second item, you'll see a lift station maintenance truck. And we currently have thirty-four lift stations and we do contract that service out. In other words, there's some work that we can do, but every time we have to have a pump pulled, whatever the case may be, we have to call that contract service in, which that leads to lag time. In other words, we're not able to respond as quickly. That could lead to possible SSOs, which SSOs lead to fines from VHEC, things of this nature. So, this truck would prevent, or hopefully prevent, and provide a better service to the city in order to be able to respond a lot quicker than what we're able to now. Uh, the equipment trailer, we share on there, we share a trailer with operations. This would be a dedicated equipment trailer for the one piece of equipment that utilities has now. Uh, with the expansion of lake grids, of course, anything on that outside, we have to drive that piece of equipment out there. The smaller piece of equipment we have, we have to load it on a large trailer, which requires a CDL truck to pull that trailer. This trailer would require, or be able to pull behind a service truck, twenty-five hundred, two-fifty series truck, to haul that piece of equipment over to the other side if needed.
Meaning, any employee could do it?
Yes. Uh, the vacuum jetter truck, um, that probably would be shared as well with fifty percent operations. Uh, that is an item that is a basically one-stop shop truck. In other words, you're able to clean the lines as well as, once you clean those lines, to vacuum out what you've just cleaned out of that line. Right now, we have to do that manually. In other words, it's kinda backbreaking work. What we're able to get out of there, of course, we're not able to get all of it out of there, so it continues to wash on down to the plants. Um, but with this truck, we would be able to get, I guess, a hundred percent or close to a hundred percent as possible out of what we clean out of the collection lines as well as the storm drain lines. Uh, the one service, or excuse me, one ton service dump truck, that is a need that we have currently. Right now, we share, uh, with operations department as well. And with that, it leads to, okay, what are they doing with their trucks? Is there any way that we can get the trucks? Is there a truck available? Because now, when we have to dig and we have to pull out, most of the time, this mud, that we're pulling out, cause we're digging, it causes this leaking. So, we have to do something with that mud, take it back, get clean dirt, and then put gravel, crush run, whatever on top of that in order to stabilize it so we can get it asphalted back or concreted back. This, uh, dump truck, we wouldn't have to worry about finding time to coordinate between departments. Uh, of course, maintenance building and inventory storage. Right now, we currently have what we consider Plant Four as a little facility for the operators, wastewater treatment plant operators, and of course, the building beside, um, City Hall. Uh, we currently have staff in there. We currently have, uh, somewhat of an inventory in there as much as possible. Right now, we got about thirty-five hundred water meters stored in there that we're hoping to get in the ground in the next three or four months. But as that property, um, develops over the years, whatever the city council agrees to do with it, more than likely, that will go away for, uh, utilities, so we'll need someplace to go once that property decides what, what goes there. And of course, the last one is pipe inspection cameras, and that is for the wastewater collection system as well. As many of you know, we're upgrading the traditional T G K sewer system now. Uh, with this camera, this would allow us, hopefully, to stay on top of some of those things where if we weren't able to get out and locate, or we mislocated, some contractor board threw us, we were having issues, we could go camera this line, these lines, hopefully, put in the work or get it repaired prior to it causing us additional headaches.
Are these additional cameras?
We have, we have one camera now, this push camera. This would be a motorized camera. Right now, with the push camera, we're only able to go up to basically six-inch pipe and at a distance of about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. This motorized camera would be able to TV anything up to twelve-inch line, which is the largest collection line that we have, and possibly go anywhere between three to five hundred feet.
What does this do to the rates? What does this, what are these additions due to the rate structure?
At this point, Tom, nothing.
So, based on the current rate structure that we have now, with the proposed increases that we have from Rock Hill and Fort Mill, we can do this stuff?
That's why I was planning that for the future.
Based on what you're talking about for next year, yes. For the following years? One of the things we try to do, and this goes back even with some of, uh, Tim's items, is as capital equipment is paid off, additional comes on. You know, so it's almost like a, a rotating door, so to speak, is, yeah, as we, um, if you look at when he's got the, um, the leaf, new leafback truck, for that first payment, it's the year after we've paid off the other one. You know, that kinda thing. So, what we would, uh, look to do here is, as we have paid off some of these items, as we have eliminated some, some of our expenses, like the big lake tank that's costing us fourteen thousand?
Hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Well, come next budget year, only a portion of that, for only a couple of months, will that be on there. Seventeen, eighteen budget year, that thing is a hundred percent gone. You know, your sludge hauling expenses start to come down, you know, things like that, that where you look at some of the utility items, line items right now that are way out of whack from an expense standpoint, those things start to drill down to become more normal once the system gets, gets improved. Now, we've also got debt that we have to pay, uh, both on the acquisition as well as on the repair, but thus, these are the items that we would be bringing to you as it made sense and as it fit within the budget. Now, it may be that we come to you and then say, okay, well, we didn't do these things. Well, why not? Well, because we'd have to increase races, rates by dollar, you know, per thousand gallons. Well, then that's a conversation we can have with that council at that time. I mean, it may be next year, it may be five years from now, but no, the sixteen, seventeen budget year, these do not affect.
Okay, and unless I missed it somewhere, I've been hearing for years that we need a new water tower, or we're gonna need a new water tower.
Correct.
I don't see that in this at all.
That is part of our conversations with Windhaven Development.
Okay.
We do have cash available that could go towards payment of that water tower in our utility funds, uh, but it's also a conversation that we're having with the, uh, Windhaven developer, to where maybe that cost isn't ours. He's already, uh, per the PDD, has given us the land, um, but we're, we're trying to get him to put that tank in as well.
Should we at least be planning for that?
Alright, I was just kidding. No, I'm gonna ask the developer.
Any other infrastructure that we might need in the utility area? You know, do we need any other major infrastructure?
Water, water tower would be the biggest thing. Um, we've been very fortunate at T G K in the fact that the developers have been required to put in the infrastructure and indeed it back to us, which is kinda the norm, um, you know, in, you know, in a lot of places, but, um, other than lift stations, we're having a conversation with York County about a regional lift station in the Windhaven area. Realistically, that, um, we're looking at a half million gallon elevated tank, um, in that area. That gives us, uh, a million, one point two five, right? One point two five in elevated storage, which no, no more bigger than what we're really gonna get size-wise. Should be plenty, according to our engineers.
No, no other infrastructure in old T G K?
No, what now?
In old T G K, gonna need any work, replacement in the next fifteen years?
For...
Sewer, water?
But sewer stuff's doing, is happening right now.
But how long does that last? You know, we're doing it now. I, is it gonna last us fifteen, twenty years? Or are we gonna run into the same problem that we have now?
Oh, yeah. If it's maintained, that's the one.
Well, it's currently forty ye, forty years old, you're right, but, you know, look what we got.
With this additional equipment, later on, it will help us to identify what may not.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay.
And do little by little through the...
I'll just say this, I'm in the construction business, we own a utility company. You've got to have a vacuum truck. I don't know what you're paying for.
A lot.
So, but, I mean, you're, you're spreading it out over roughly forty-five thousand dollars over those years, and I guarantee you, I mean, I would think you're paying that much.
Oh, yeah.
For as much line as you have.
Mm-hmm.
So...
That's a big expense, though.
Well, that's the biggest, that's why I bring that up.
But if you look at, if you look at our expense budget, we're at two hundred ninety-seven thousand this year.
On pump trucks?
On pump trucks. In one budget year that we're not even finished with. Yeah.
We got that fixed?
Hopefully. Um, we, we pray for droughts in summer. Let us get things fixed, please.
Me, I would move that up to two thousand and eighteen or seventeen.
I would think from a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just making a comment.
I would say, I would say if there's a chance that the water tower won't... I would say, I would say if there's a chance that the water tower won't get covered by the development, from a strategic document perspective, it should be in here if we think it's required to serve the town, you know what I mean?
Most hardly.
With a, a sheet just like this that says, you know, this is one of the ones that maybe falls off the list, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a good point.
Any other questions?
Anything else for Philip Utilities? Thank you, Philip.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Where's my next skinny pig? Joey!
Hey, real quick, before Joey starts, do you guys know the percentage of the units as far as for contracting those pump trucks? Whether it's for sludge from the tank to the beach club versus just cleaning out those lines?
I would say most of, everything that's in the two ninety-seven is hauling from the lake tank and from Plant Four. The, uh, the stuff from the cleaning is actually part of the SRF process. Yeah, I'm good. Swelling some razor blades, I'm fine.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Joey Blytham, Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Tegu K. The first project, uh, is a project that, uh, when we began this process, uh, earlier on, we identified as a need, Rundy Park Field Lights. That was actually completed this winter. Um, the, the lights in their current state, um, well before my time, but from my understanding, they were there before Hugo. There is, uh, the, the lifetime of that has definitely reached its point. We, we had several issues with the wiring to where, uh, the breakers would trip if all the lights were actually on at one time. We had to turn them off, um, not, not nearly enough adequate light in some areas. The, the improvements from this project has been significant and very noticeable already.
And council, I'm sorry, um, just straight through that line, because that's not the correct payment schedule. So when we, uh, as we produce a more final draft, we'll have the correct payment schedule on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's two hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand seven fifty-four.
Yes.
Uh, next project is the Beach and Swim Center winter cover replacement. I've been with the city, it'll be nine years in August, and to my understanding, that, that cover's not been replaced, um.
It's fifteen years old now.
Based off of the recommendations of our, uh, of our pool management company, it has met its use. It's had a nice run, um, but definitely need to replace that within the upcoming, uh, year or two. This is another project that we identified as a need when we began the, the process. The resurfacing of, uh, the tennis courts, uh, the lower tennis courts and, uh, the tennis courts up at the golf course.
Can I go back a second? Uh, Beach and Swim Center replacement of the, of the, um, cover, that comes out of the Beach and Swim Center budget?
Correct.
That's not general fund budget, that's Beach and Swim Center budget?
That is correct.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No problem.
And the, uh, the Rundy Field Lights were in the H stacks.
Right, right.
Uh, the tennis courts, um, so the, the first phase of it's scheduled to begin this July. Two of the lower courts will be resurfaced in addition to two of the, uh, the golf course lights with the hopeful completion of the project, um, within the next year. The courts have significant cracks in them. It's one of those things where it's the cost of service to do business and, um, safety, safety will become an issue if it does not get addressed soon. Let me s-
What's the respective life of the surface? Is this something that needs, because I remember it being done previously. Is it every?
Definitely, um, I was gonna say probably around five years is probably the recommended, um, depending on how well you maintain it, uh, and extend it. That's a good point.
Potentially. Really, it's, it depends on the undersurface to get it to last longer. They all, eight of them should be bulldozed, the asphalt yanked out, the rock yanked out. You basically build a tennis court like you do a road, and these surface cracks, they're coming from either a bad stone base or a bad subgrade. And, I mean, they, they, it happens, it happens everywhere, um, at least on recreational type courts like what we have. We've been pretty fortunate. We did have a couple of courts, um, and I'm gonna look at David Taylor. We had some out here that something went wrong with the, with the surfacing. They came back the very next year on their dime and resurfaced. But yeah, every about five to six years, um, without completely just bulldozing and starting over from scratch, usually about five to six years on the surfacing.
I'm gonna skip Catawba Park and save it for last in fairness to pickup trucks. Pickup trucks, a need that I've identified. The hope is to potentially bring on another maintenance staff in the upcoming budget year, um, to give us more efficient, um, access to the parks, uh, without having to saddle two guys riding together, you lose some efficiency there. So this allows us to cover more area in a shorter amount of time with the addition of a pickup truck. Uh, Catawba Park?
Just gonna sit down. Just gonna sit down.
Okay.
No.
Oh, okay.
Catawba Park, in all fairness, I mean, council, I think, is pretty up to speed with that, where we are. We've got construction drawings going now. We are showing the full, uh, amount, but that doesn't mean that that's the full amount that we're gonna have to fund. Okay, so you could have other funding, other funding sources, um, you know, private groups, things like that, naming rights, you know, partnerships, that kind of thing. So it is, it, it, it does need to be in there, it does need to show as a placeholder. But just because it says ten point one two five million dollars, doesn't mean that we as a city are gonna have to spend ten million dollars to get the full thing built. So I did wanna say that.
Um, you know, in, in regards to speaking towards need, um, just to give you perspective, I started in August of two thousand and seven. My first fall here, we had roughly five hundred sports participants in our youth program and a little, little under thirty adult sports. Fast forward to spring of, uh, twenty sixteen, we have sixteen hundred youth sports participants and forty-two adult sports teams. During that time, the city has not added a single facility that we currently own. We're able to juggle and manage this by relationships that we have with the Fort Mill School District, which we do get invoiced for now. We also lease out land at State Line Sports Complex to help fill some of those needs. You know, in terms of urgency, the State Line field is now for sale. It may sell tomorrow, it may sell a year from now, but it's something that we can no longer count on happening every year. We ran into issues with the school district this year in terms of, uh, filled space. Filled space that had always been given to us in the past was taken away partially. We were able to manage, but as we found, it's not something that we can completely rely on anymore. Catawba Park, not only does it fill our needs, but it gives the city a great opportunity. Bring, could potentially bring in new businesses, support the current businesses that we help, we have. It could really be a crown jewel of our Parks and Recreation System. It's currently set at its sixty-one acres to be the third largest facility in York County, only below Cherry Park and Manchester Meadows. It will put us on the map, I promise you. And it gives us opportunity to bring in tournaments and, uh, really be able to showcase this city to, to people, not, not only in the city, but outside in the surrounding areas as well.
Can I ask a question? Um, we're doing rock, work with Rockville School District, and they're going through the exact same process for their next bond. And, and I brought it up, I guess I'm the cold water guy that, and maybe you've done this and I didn't read it, but when you project a building of fifty-seven thousand in two thousand and nineteen, for instance, for the utilities maintenance, even at Park, have you accounted for escalation at all?
No, which is why I said I really don't wanna focus on the numbers. Cause we're gonna update the numbers every year, we're gonna update this thing every year. But these are real-time today numbers, absolutely.
So it's present value?
Yes, present value. It's absolutely present value.
I was curious about the Wind Haven project, when we're getting that, the twenty acres, if that should be included in here as well. I know that, you know, we've got the four hundred thousand.
That was some, yeah, that was something that we had discussed and, and thought that since we would be updating this every year, so, you know, as fifteen, sixteen rolls off, sixteen, seventeen comes in, then we bring in twenty-five, twenty-six, as, as it continue, as we update this each year, and we've got a little bit better timeframe as to when are we gonna have it, when are we gonna have the money for it? You know, what, you know, the developer contribution? That's when we start looking to, okay, yeah, maybe this thing, now it fits in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. Yeah, but right now, we just know that it's been annexed. But when are we gonna actually own the twenty acres? Yeah, probably in the next year, you know, year and a half. But at what point are we able to start developing it? Well, it's gonna depend on when the infrastructure goes in, when there's roads to it, you know, things of that nature. But then we can start putting it into the plan and start, you know, looking at site plans and what it, what does it need to be? It is something that Joey and I did talk about at length as far as whether to put it in now. Maybe it's in next year's update or two years from now update. But for the time being, we said, we decided, let's leave it out for now. And then let's come back and add it in later when we actually have a good idea of what it's gonna be. You know, is it gonna be all soccer fields, is it gonna be all baseball fields? Is it gonna be a mix of the two? Yeah, these are conversations that still need to, need to happen.
And I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to that. I mean, doing it either way is probably okay. But I think, I guess from my perspective, when we're looking at, you know, capital improvement programs, you know, I asked the same question when we were talking about funding the new firehouse. Well, what else is there? What's, what is on the radar? So if we know about something, even if we don't know the detail, you know, maybe it is appropriate to have it there. Maybe it doesn't have a lot around.
Similar, similar to the water tower, it needs a placeholder.
Okay, we can, we can absolutely do that.
I mean, you know, because it, it gives a council an idea, it's the same as, well, gee, if we spend this million here, you know, then what's gonna happen next? And now we're not gonna have the second million or whatever happens today.
Okay.
But, you know, the, you certainly, you certainly didn't say anything wrong in the way you thought through it, because you don't know much more than a line item placeholder with zero dollars.
We can, we can absolutely do the placeholder on it, absolutely, not a problem.
Any other questions for the good cause? Thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
Oh, here's trouble, I hear.
Uh, Steve Parker, Police Department, um, wanna thank you for having and listening to us tonight. This is very inspirational for us to be able to sit down and do this, because as they say, if you don't have a plan, you plan to fail. And, uh, what we wanna do is serve the citizens the best we can. And so that's why some of the things that we came up with are why we came up with them. So thank you for hearing us out, first of all.
Hey, can we do the golf court people first?
Yeah, go sit down, Steve.
Boat, uh, boat, trailer, uh, this is, uh, something that has become a serious issue for us within the last year or two. Uh, over the last three months, it's been in maintenance at, uh, the Tegu K Marina, and we're having trouble getting it fixed. We were able to run it this weekend, uh, but we were also told that the issues that it's having, that, uh, the mechanic at the marina is not gonna be able to work on it. So we have to have another mechanic work on it. Well, we don't even have a trailer to take it somewhere else, so obviously, it's a need. Our boat is, uh, definitely, uh, seen its, seen its time.
It's a need based on what we've heard from previous councils as far as how much they wanna see it out there. You know, so I mean, if, if we don't wanna continue boat patrols from PD and things of that nature, then it's not a need.
And, and you know, I mean, we've, we've had to respond to a drowning last year. We, we helped save someone this year, so, uh, there's.
Doesn't the fire department have a trailer?
Trailers aren't really universal. That one's, that, that, I don't know that that trailer works for that, for this boat.
I have a boat and I don't have a trailer. When I get serviced, I call whoever it is and they come get my boat for me and bring it back when it's done.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, yeah, there's absolutely ways to get it serviced, but you're talking about a very old boat with very old engines on it at this point.
Uh, body cameras, uh, this is actually a state mandate that, uh, all law enforcement within South Carolina will go to body cameras. They have said that they will end up, uh, giving money back. But when they give that money back, I don't know. Uh, that, I think they budgeted a limited amount of money for the cameras. They said you're gonna have body cameras, but they gave, uh, a number that really isn't going to give, uh, agencies enough. So.
Chief, when's it, when does it, when do all the police departments have to have body cameras? Is there an actual date at this point?
Yes and no.
Yeah.
Well, it was signed into law last June.
Right.
Uh, they gave us a hundred and eighty days in which to put together our, our plan, and then it has to be approved. Our plan got approved, but we're not required to implement body cameras until they're fully funded. I see that probably changing over the next year, and they start to say, hey, your plan's approved, buy your body cameras, start rolling your body cameras out. Uh, I, I fully believe what chief said. Yeah, they're telling us they're gonna give us money back, but they're also saying they're gonna put more money in education, they're gonna fund more roads, and they're gonna do all that without increasing taxes.
Yeah, your expected target date is next year?
Uh, seventeen, eighteen.
And if, the issue is, is that just also on this side of it, is that, uh, all the agencies in this county are going towards the body cameras and for prosecution purposes, uh, we won't be able to win a case without the body cams, because why were we the only agency without body cams? So those are things that we have to look, look at as well, outside of that.
We also have the expense of the storage of the video. That's probably the most expensive thing, yes.
It is, yeah, it is the largest part. The cameras themselves are not that expensive, it's everything else.
Yeah, so the twelve thousand five hundred each year.
That's, that's a finance.
Okay, the finance.
Yes.
You're basically, you're paying for everything in year one, and you're making your payments across, across four years.
Next is E-Desk, this is pushed out further, you'll see that that's pushed out further. One of the things is that, uh, that there used to be a dispatch center here in Tegu K. From what I've heard a lot through citizens, is that, uh, there's no way to communicate or they want better ways to communicate with the police department when they come to the lobby. E-Desk is relatively not expensive and gives them multiple ways to communicate with the police department, from paying tickets to, uh, emailing an officer to multiple things. You can set it up any way you want to, but not only having the hotline phone where they can call and pick up dispatch, but also giving them a better way, a better service, uh, as far as that goes. So that's, that's the E-Desk.
And something of that expense would be something that we would look to handle within the operational budget. You know, there's, there's a lot of these smaller ticket items in here, even the next thing that, that chief's gonna talk about. Those are the type of things that we would look to try to, to work within the operational budget of the police department to, to fund. Not as in, you know, bringing a resolution to council, hey, will you fund this piece of thing? It would be discussed during the budget workshop and, and hopefully implemented that way.
I love the idea of being sensitive to the service, we hear that all the time too. They want, but this still doesn't provide interaction with someone. So is this used at other cities that they have felt like it is successful and they're still getting that end result?
Yes, and a lot of, a lot of cities don't have a desk that you can walk up to twenty-four hours, but that was the way it used to be here, and so the citizens got used to that. That's not something that is, uh, universal. But I've talked to, actually, Chicago was the first city that came up with this, and it's, it's gone kinda nationwide to just help, uh, just bring the level of service up for the citizens. So that's why that's there.
Mayor, you had a question?
I'm just having a little heartburn over the fact that citizens are asking for it, and we decided to put it out to twenty-one, twenty-two.
Well, I mean, if it, that's, that again is up to you all to decide if you wanna move it in the plan. It is, there's some greater needs, uh, obviously, that I, I believe are in front of that, and that's why, that, that's why it was put where it is. That I see the difference in the need and, and as we said, we did say wants and desires compared to needs, and that's why it's there. Uh, fingerprint live scan is the next page. Right now, we ink, uh, and it's horrible. We, uh, we, I can give you a, a billion examples of, uh, we bring in two or three prisoners, two or three people that we've arrested. We have no secure area for them. We fingerprint them on regular ink, and then they go use our bathroom. And as last night, somebody who was arrested defecated all over the, all over the bathroom and just left it there. I'm sorry, I probably didn't need to say that, but it's just the honest to God's truth. So this is something that's inkless, so that we're not having to bring prisoners in an unsecure area. So I'm sorry that I had to say it that way, but it's just the honest truth and wanted to let people know. So this is a digital way to make sure that we're handling our business the most professional way. Power DMS, power DMS is basically, we're moving towards becoming a national accredited agency. We wanna have the best policies and procedures, uh, across the United States. Those policies and proceeds, uh, procedures protect us liability-wise. So pursuits, use of force, all the high liability issues, well, without power DMS- So pursuits, use of force, all the high liability issues, well, without power D M S, you're not allowed to become a national accredited agency. You have to have this software to be nationally accredited.
And how is the software and accreditation allow you to do the things that you need to do? How, how is that?
So, so you put your, your policies and procedures are online on this power D M S software. And what they used to do is you would pack up boxes and boxes and boxes and send them off to people around the country that would read your policies and procedures. Well, now they're able to do it digitally is basically what it is. And it also, uh, lets you track when you change procedures or policies so that you can go back on what you, you say. We had a use of force incident today. It was a questionable use of force incident. We had to change a policy or found that there was a deficiency. When we change it, we can go back and it'll show the changes and when they occurred so that we can also show those to attorneys in liable situations. So we're not just saying, oh, we changed it and, and what was it changed to? Now we have a digital copy of how it was changed.
And this is completely separate and apart from anything we did to get all of our ordinances online and the way we manage that process because it deals with.
This is just SOPs for PD.
Yep, this is Kalia, uh, is, is who manages the power D M S program. Uh, mobile data terminals, we're already, we do have the, uh, mobile data terminals. Uh, this is gonna be an ongoing cost every year. Uh, it's on a lease. Uh, the equipment basically goes, it's not any good the day you buy it really, but every two to three years, everybody, I know you're not supposed to say that, right? Uh, everybody knows that computers, uh, are, are constantly, uh, becoming, they're changing from, you might have a, a Windows Program Eight and you buy a new software and it only operates on Windows Program Ten. And if you have the older computers, you're not able to stay and maintain with the time. So that's why that's there. Motorola radios, uh, the radios are, we, our radio system works off of York County's trunking system. Uh, York County has upgraded the trunking system so that all radios must be replaced and are not under warranty as of twenty seventeen. So there's a replacement plan for those, uh, that we've already been going through a, a process of those replacement. But this is just a continuation, uh, replacement plan to make sure that we're, our radios are operational.
Well, now Motorola is also dropping the service on the units we have now, right?
Uh, yes.
And this, y'all will see this again with, uh, fire department as well. And they're all on the eight hundred megahertz.
Is someone else who can supply this type of service?
Millions. It's, I think, the York County paid like two point five million dollars for the trunking system. It's a very, it's encrypted system. Uh, it's not something you can go out and change.
No, that's correct.
No. Uh, M four rifles, uh, this is something that, uh, law enforcement agencies across the country are moving towards M four rifles as opposed to shotguns. Uh, there's, uh, basically active shooters, uh, situations are happening across the country. And as we're faced with those situations, shotguns as opposed to rifles are more accurate. Don't have a spread where you could injure some, uh, innocent citizens. And you're able to make sure that you're matching the firepower of the bad guy. So those are why M four rifles are in there.
How many do you get for twenty-two thousand five hundred?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're roughly, by the time you buy what you need to buy for them, the grips and everything else. Uh, they're roughly fifteen hundred dollars per. Uh, but then there's some add-ons and stuff that you need to do for, for law enforcement because you have to have a car mount and different things like that that, that go into it as well.
So how many are we getting for twenty-two thousand five hundred? Ten? Fifteen?
Yep. Roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Are you selling the shotguns? Or are you keeping those?
We won't sell all the shotguns, but we would end up probably, uh, doing something with some of the shotguns. Yes, sir.
Well, now I can see a raffle coming up.
Patrol vehicles.
A fundraiser coming up, that's right.
Patrol vehicles, uh, just making sure that we are maintaining our vehicles on a six-year to a hundred and twenty thousand mile cycle. Uh, found when I first got here, uh, last year, we had spent like twenty-five thousand dollars in maintenance cost just from the improvement of, uh, vehicles that we've gotten over this past year. We've seen our maintenance costs go down. Plus, if you're doing this, uh, you're able to, instead of sell a car, as Charlie said earlier, for a thousand or two thousand, you sell your car for five or ten and you're able to recoup that a, at the end. But you wanna make sure that your vehicles are able to run. And we're still fighting a battle on, uh, some older vehicles. We have vehicles hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty thousand tape, uh, duct tape around steering wheels, different things like that. And we're pushing towards making sure that we're, we're, uh, operating efficiently.
And these are actual patrol vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I feel like we've got so many new ones, but I thought we didn't have anything old. I thought we got rid of everything that was old.
Most of it. Most of your old ones have, have been cycled out. Still got some more left.
We still have about a quarter of the fleet.
That you use?
That we need to cycle, yes.
How many miles a year do you put on us?
It depends. See, the, with our vehicles, uh, it's different than a lot of agencies. A lot of agencies like York County, Rock Hill, other agencies have, each have take home cars. For ours, they're running sometimes twenty-four hours a day. So your, your wear and tear is a lot harsher in, in this city than they would be in another city. Uh, I, I would say that we're, yeah, I think it's in the thirty to forty thousand range. Yeah, so, so they're actually cycling out pretty quick.
Yeah, they're wearing on it for three, four years.
Yes, sir.
I've been asked a bunch about the style, not to say that we don't need them.
Right.
But I've been asked, why do we, I don't really know, do our cars, is, uh, like the crossover thing or the SUV looking kind of thing? Why do we need that? And I'm like.
That's a, that's a great question. So what, we went and we did a huge comparison for miles per gallon, maintenance, um, cost, cost at resale, um, and what we found is the SUV is the cheapest car and I have a study for that, actually. But that's not the only reason that the SUV is important. Uh, we've, as law enforcement keeps growing and growing and growing and the demands are bigger. We have cameras in the car, we have computers in the car, we have radars in the car, we have printers in the car. So if we try to go sit a passenger in our seat, a trainee, he's sitting to the side over here in a sedan where the SUV, he's able to sit as well as prisoner comfort, uh, which we don't really care about that, but no, I'm just kidding. Um, but, uh, so that's why, one, one of the reasons why the sedan is, is the choice vehicle that you'll see almost all law enforcement switching to is the cost is actually less.
The SUV.
Yes, SUV, I'm sorry, as opposed to the sedan. Yep, Fort Mill, York County, all of them are switching over.
Can I tell you a funny story there? A little levity here? Um, two weeks ago, I was at the police memorial and you almost read about the mayor of T G K arrested for breaking into a police vehicle. Because I went up to the brown SUV, exactly like mine, went to put my code in to get into the car. There was no code. It's like, what happened to the code? Then I realized it wasn't my car. It wasn't one of the police officer's cars. So I went to the next one, exact same thing. I had three cars that were brown SUVs in the parking lot that I tried to break into. Before I realized they weren't mine.
I think yours is burgundy anyway, really.
Uh, it's Diet Coke color, is what, I've been told.
You colorblind?
Yes, I am, as a matter of fact. It was, I locked the keys in the car.
And last. And last, uh, new police department facility. Um, as, as, uh, I can tell you and I would love for anybody to come visit. Uh, our department is a high liability department. We need to upgrade our department. We don't have a holding facility. We're bringing two to three prisoners in at a time, having to unhandcuff them and fingerprint them and there's a lack of security, uh, which is an issue. Um, we're, we're, uh, one thing is, yes, crime, crime is not really high in T G K, which is great. But criminals don't choose. They don't say, you know what? I'm not going in the T G K border. And we do arrest gang bangers from Charlotte, from Charleston. We've had somebody from, uh, bomb making material with M four and nine hundred rounds in his car to armed robberies, to everything else. And we have to make sure that we're, uh, have a, uh, secure facility. As you look at our, basically, our partner law enforcement agency in Fort Mill. Uh, they not only, uh, have a big, nice facility and their only three thousand population bigger than us, but they just also got, got the city hall addition. I'm not trying to keep up with Fort Mill, but I know that we have a serious issue in T G K with our law enforcement facility and that's something that we need to address.
Have we looked into what the renovations cost would be to getting it up to scale?
That's what that twenty thousand is for sixteen, seventeen is to, to put together a study on construction costs for a new versus renovation to existing.
I know I went through this in Rock Hill, uh, for their law enforcement site. And I can tell you that renovation at this site is gonna be very difficult because once you renovate, they make you become ADA compliant. You'll have to be fire compliant. You'll have to be everything else and it will cost a tremendous amount of money to do that. So although we do have a study in there to check to make sure that it's something that we can or can't do.
And when they evaluate, are they able to tell us what else we could use building for?
That's what we're, that's what we'll be looking for, yes. Yeah, if the, if the recommendation is to build new, it'll als, I'll also be looking for a recommendation of what best use is for that piece.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Scott, you ready? Yeah, fire department next. Chief Samansky.
Well, you need something more than another fire station?
Yes, Chief Samansky, fire department. Charlie beat me up on all my wants. I have no wants. I have him in my heart, but he won't let me have him. So everything here is a need. What you guys gotta realize with council support, went from being one of the worst rated fire departments in York County in eight years to being one of the number one departments in York County, number one department in York County. Then Rock Hill took us over and, of course, they have a thirty million dollar budget. So we've done very well with what we've had from the support we've got from council. So obviously, our first thing on the list is new station. We beat this dog to death quite, quite a bit and why we need it. And then we just need to give the citizens on the other side of the town the same service that we give here, the same response time. Response time across the town is, they were from eight to fifteen to twenty minutes. And over here, we're under five minutes. That makes a big deal when a house is in, on fire. House, uh, a structure fire, uh, multiplies, doubles every time, every three minutes. Some say six, but it's really three. So you have a stove fire that becomes a, a kitchen fire, it becomes a flowing off kitchen. And three minutes later, now we got an extension to the rooms above it or next to it. Just depends on how the house is constructed. And you have, uh, the new trusses, systems, they fail in five minutes. So now we're talking about life safety and getting people in and out and response time really means a lot. So that's my spiel on new fire stations. It's just to give the same service we're giving and to maintain. Plus, the new station is almost centered in the city. Nothing's more than three miles away from new station. I S O is five miles by the road for our rating. It used to be six miles. It used to be a circle, by the way, that qualifies. I S O could change next month, next year. We're taking a class on it next week to find out what's going on. But, uh, this has just put us forward to where we need to be. Be proactive instead of reactive. Any questions on the fire station? Good, let's move on. Fire truck, alright. We're currently looking and getting bids on fire trucks. We're also, uh, getting bids on used trucks. I think, uh, Jennifer asked that, or demos.
For the new, for the, the new station?
No, we're gonna move engine one and ladder one over there to the new station. And that leaves us with a twenty-four year old plus and a thirty-some year old truck, an old station, station one. Um, this, we have to have a, uh, a truck with a short wheelbase so that we can maintain traditional TK. And it's gonna be the first out truck over on this station. The other ones are basically, uh, backup trucks. If we run them like we run the engine one and ladder one, they're not gonna last. So they're, they're, they're good to have, but they've really, their useful life is not, I wouldn't say gone, but it's coming to the time. So we gotta be proactive and, and get a truck for this side of, of the town. And the new, new guys that are gonna staff that station will, um, they'll take it out first.
From a long-term perspective, is one enough? Or do you really need to have a replacement of all your fire equipment?
We're, we're working on that right now.
Twenty-five and thirty-year-olds, you said?
Yeah, one's twenty-four plus and another one is thirty-two, thirty-three plus.
Maybe again, from a forward-looking placeholder perspective, maybe, maybe it should be two fire trucks.
We're looking at it, um, within the next, probably, when we redo this every year. Now we're, probably year eleven, twelve, what we've discussed. I actually asked for more than one truck, but that was a want, not a need. Okay.
Well, on that, that note, you're, as you're going out and you're looking, you're pricing out new trucks and demo models and things like that. Can you find out how much we could get for our trucks? The twenty-four and thirty-year-old truck?
Most manufacturers don't take trade-ins.
Yeah, but there's gotta be another city that's.
No, there's plenty of cities out buy used trucks. There's, there's websites for that.
Yeah.
Our problem on the other trucks is we don't own them. They're owned by the volunteer fire department. So that's where, that's where we stand with that. So, um, we'll know more after Thursday night. When we have negotiations with volunteers.
What are the SCBA's, Scott?
SCBA's are self-potented breathing apparatus. Those are, we have packs that are twenty years old. Useful life is about ended. Um, so we can get probably another five years out of them, four years. We're just, we just got done replacing all the cylinders that, you know, a thousand dollars a pop. We bought some used ones and instead of getting ten years out of them, we're getting five years out of them. We got a real good discount. We got a real good relationship with M S N up and then, you know, every time the Navy comes in to drop six hundred bottles, they have two, three years left on them, so we buy them for a couple hundred dollars. Alright, so we've, we've really been diligent trying to save money there. The other thing is, uh, per NFPA twenty, or it's to build up, take our packs up to standard twenty, NFPA standard, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think of the code, but basically, you're twenty thousand thirteen. We can refurnish our, our air packs. New air packs are running anywhere from eight thousand to ten thousand dollars, depends on what bells and whistles you get on them. But we can refurnish our air packs and maybe save half this money. I gotta get clarification on that, that we can do that. If we can, then we'll, next year, we'll change the bu, the numbers. Uh, new river rescue boat. Currently, we have no resources to save anybody below the dam and we're responsible for it. We depend, we can take an engine down there. We have ropes we can throw, auto light preserver. If it's a, someone just by the dock, we can jump off by the landing and tie rope around one of our guys, harness and grab them. But our problem is when the dam is down, people go out to that thing, they hear the bell, they still stay out there and the water comes and down the river they go. So at the pump house, I guess they get to watch a lot of people go floating on by. Um, our call volume down there has increased thirty percent since last year alone. And when we open the park up, it's ours. We're responsible. We have to be the thing to respond. Right now, they have a swift water rescue team, but we're training to become one. And we have two or three guys through the first class and then six, but, um, we have no, um, no way to get in the water. Uh, with all the rocks and everything, John boats work, but they're really inadequate. We've been looking at a couple of different other options, um, what we buy. What we buy, we wanna make sure we're good, we wanna hook a small boat that we can put in the new truck or hook to a pickup truck that'll be stationed in, stationed two, and we can get off a damn road or go down the new gray rock and go down to the, to the dam. So our response time can be a lot quicker. Right now, we res- uh we rely on uh York County, it's not funded by the county, it's a private swift water rescue team. And we had a call there last, well, two weeks ago, and the people were stuck on the thing, on an island, and the water was rising. And we called, we shut the water off at the dam, but that doesn't happen in five minutes. We waited forty-eight minutes, I timed it forty-eight minutes for them to show up. When they showed up, I was the young guy there. And I was a little nervous about these guys putting their boat in and going out there, figured we'd have a double rescue. So it's just a matter of, you know, this is our place, we have to, you know, this is a need, we have to be able to respond. And I've got it out here in eighteen nineteen, but if these calls keep going up, we don't wanna be in the news, TK doesn't have, can't take care of their area.
Why doesn't York County think it's a need?
York County's got, uh, York County doesn't have a team, Rock Hill's got a, a team, it's, it's under the um each individual fire department, what area they cover.
Why don't they think there's a need then?
They do have one.
Well.
You're saying the access is on our side?
Access is on our side, in our, in our territory. They have one for themselves.
That you paid for with your taxes?
Yes.
You can't use it?
You can't, you have to wait.
The reason why doesn't increase the thirty percent of calls?
Because of popularity of Riverwalk. We've got more people putting in up here to paddle down- To paddle down Riverwalk. We're like, we're at the point where this is as far up the lake they can go and get access. And everybody wants to take that extra three or four miles. If you look, when you go across the bridge, not seventy-seven, but the other bridge, twenty-one bypass, whatever it's called, you'll see all the kayaks there, just coming down. Well, all those kayaks coming this way were put in in TK, every one of them. And from what I understand is, someone's talking about, you know, uh starting a kayak crew or outfitter, and they're gonna come down there with twenty boats at a time.
But we already have three that operate in the city. And they, they launch at Memphis Creek.
Just amazing, just amazing. And you feel so helpless when you show up with your fire, big half-million-dollar fire truck, and you got a piece of rope and a ring, and you're going, and people are yelling, "Yay!", and we're like, "No!" You know, that's, that's, but that's realistically what happens. And you know, half hour later, forty-five minutes later, someone comes and, and you gotta put the boat in, and thirty minutes later, and, you know. It doesn't ba- bother me when it's a, a person my age, and I think, "You idiot." You, you're getting exactly what you deserve. But when you see a mother and a daughter out there, or a little kid, or a dad who's the idiot, and he's got four kids out there with him, which happened a little while back, then you're like, well, you know, they shouldn't be there. You know, it says right on there, the bell, the water, I mean, you can't put any bigger signs. Unless we put a marshal down there, charge him ten dollars to launch. Or ten dollars not to launch, alright?
Alright, so what's up with like-
Pickup truck here.
Pickup truck. Pickup truck, pull the boat, and there was gonna be a new uh cheese vehicle, but Charlie made me take that out. So we actually need a pickup truck, 'cause right now we're serviced with a, a fifteen-year-old SUV excursion that if I get a pickup truck without saving gas, I'll pay for the pickup truck. It's a twelve-cylinder. And it, and we don't own it either. So we need to replace it, we need to use that to go to meetings, to go training. Uh when we hose test, we have no place to put a hose except my personal pickup truck, one of the firefighter's personal trucks we use. Okay? So that's why we need that, we need something to pull the new boat, you're gonna buy me. And then the gator, Catawba Park, the golf course, we're gonna need a gator to get around there. We're not- Gator is a six-wheel vehicle, it looks like a little golf cart with a dump body on the back.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna put a little uh hundred-gallon pump on it with foam, and so if we have a fire at Catawba Park, we can scoot down the road, or if we have to go to the golf course, we can do that.
Is it amphibious as well?
No, can't afford that, that was another want. So.
And do we have a need, or do we have, we had issues if things happen that we can't-
We've had, we've had two or three calls on the golf course. And one, I don't want, they're, they're still here. We took a truck on the golf course and messed up some car pass and made some dents in there. That was years ago. So, but-
They haven't forgotten.
That's okay. We come and open all their cars when they get locked out, so no problem. Um, any questions on any of this stuff? I mean, we've really, really, Charles really beat me up on this, my wants. I'll probably be driving that truck and be giving it to myself when I retire.
Tom Goble's giving you a Prius in a couple of weeks.
Go ahead. We've been waiting for one, we'll take it, we'll take it tomorrow.
Thank you, Scott.
Alright.
Mayor, I'd like to, if we can, uh before we dive into uh nailing down some of the specifics on the station, uh in the interest of time and fairness, if we go ahead and move to uh our golf guys, um and then we can circle back around with council on the other discussion. Does that work? David?
Oh, so these guys are smart, they brought three people in.
We got, we brought reinforcement. And chief's back there in case we need him.
We already took, we already took care of him.
Although we don't, we're not asking for a boat. Hello, isn't he?
Submarine to get the balls out of the creek.
It was interesting that we were listed as appendix A. Included in the generals pages, but it's okay. No, thanks for having us. Um and we ha- obviously have the golf as a separate entity, some of these are listed as a ongoing capital of loans that we currently have. That equipment will be coming off of those loans and we'll repurchase replacement equipment as well as golf carts on here. And we, we do have some priorities. Have an A, B, and C priority list, so we'll, we'll go over that as we go over each item, just to let you know kind of our thoughts on that. Um as we really look toward continuing and improving the asset, um as we bring more people to, to, to the city playing golf, more citizens playing golf, um our overall objective to continue upgrading the quality of, of the whole facility. So um number one on the list, uh which is a priority A for us, is to upgrade the cove irrigation. This is the original irrigation on that nine holes of golf. Uh it's not autom- automated. There are a hundred and eighty heads on that golf course roughly, Chuck, that are all having to be turned on manually. Um and for that, that nine holes to continue improving with the quality, the turf quality, um and as we're charging more for that nine, um that, that irrigation system has really become obsolete or in a, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's working, but it's not working very well. Um so we put that on a high priority for us. We have already purchased twelve controllers for the project, the golf course has. We were able to find through, Chuck actually found it through another golf course, um that we were able to purchase twelve of those at ten cents on the dollar. So we went ahead and bought those this year, just to have them uh in stock uh for the project. So um which was, it was a great find on his part to, to get those for us. So we're, we're in good shape on controllers, it's really the, the heads, the wiring, is to make it automated, where we can turn on different parts of the golf course automatically versus manually.
And new pipe, and the pipe that's there is uh forty-plus years old, thin wall pipe, um sizes that you can't even find anymore, they don't even produce five-inch pipe anymore. So when we have a leak in the five-inch pipe, we have to special order everything to reduce it or make it bigger.
So we have completely have shut down the code?
Yes, sir. It'd be a winter time project.
Yeah, that's our projection too, in the winter time, where the use is really low. Uh number two, which is also uh an A priority for us, is to uh the irrigation transfer pump to bring water from Lake Wylie into the irrigation pond. Um is, is in dire need of repair. It's a rebuild of that pump, it's not to purchase a new pump, it's to rebuild it uh to extend its life. You know, more so right now, we're kinda probably day-to-day on it. But we move about approximately twenty-five million gallons of water a year from, from Lake Wylie into the irrigation pond. The pond is capable of holding about seven days, eight, eight, eight to ten days of water for us. So um in, in uh the drought time of the year, where we can go, we haven't had it lately, we have water in the irrigation lake right now, but um in the drought time of year, we can go months really without getting significant water. And so we have to, in order to, to water the golf course, to keep the golf course alive, to keep the greens alive, we have to put irrigation water into the pond, and this is a transfer pump that helps us do that. It's just needed, uh in need of repair.
We've had it professionally diagnosed, it's been taken out, rebuilt.
Uh next on the list is green covers, uh obviously it's listed as a priority A for us, to cover the greens during the winter time. Uh this first, there are two sets, so you'll see two sets on here, greens covers later down the list too. Uh this is for the Cove Nine, the croquet lawn, uh and the chipping green is the first stage of the covers. Um that's our oldest set, when we originally did the, the Cove Nine first before we rebuilt, built the main eighteen. We'll need to replace those, and it's critical to keeping the greens um from winter kill, as we all know. Uh covering the greens has saved our greens every year. In the last four or five, we've needed to cover them several times, so it's, it's a critical component for us. Cart path repair is a, is a priority A. Um yeah, that's an ongoing issue. Yes, coming down the list. We have some Vs and a couple of Cs down the list. It's an ongoing issue, as anybody that's played on the golf course knows, from, from the, from the holes, the ruts, the roots, um it's this constant need of, of repair. The city uh and council approved a pretty large project a few years ago, uh and a continual uh improvement plan is what that line item is for. The uh next is laser level Ts, which is a, which is a priority B for us. Um over the years, the, the gr- the tea in area on really the hole, twenty-seven holes, um there's a lot of settling. Uh there's the, a lot of the Ts have gotten shifted just through Mother Nature. We do, and Tuck Staff does a great job of top dressing and trying to smooth it out. But um to really go to the next level on the golf course, the laser leveling um would need to be done. And that's stripping them, top dressing, leveling, re-sodding. And that's a two-phase, you see on here, a phase one and two. We obviously have four sets of Ts, um and so we wouldn't do them all at one time, we need to have some to play on, so we would do one set or two sets initially, and then come back behind it with, with, with the other two.
David, are you thinking you're incurring all of those costs just in sixteen seventeen? Or are you seeing those costs spread out?
It's, it's spread out, we were thinking doing one, one set one year and the next set the other year.
You're talking about for that whole column?
Yes.
In sixteen seventeen, you're seeing that spread out over four or five years, or?
The financing?
The financing part of it? Well, and that's, we haven't gotten to that point as far as whether we would take that out as, as, as a loan for all these projects, or whether we try to piecemeal it together. There's some that we can do operationally, there's some bigger projects like the irrigation that we just don't have the, the reserve amount in order to do that. So we would need some help either from the city or some sort of, of loan to do that. Uh we anticipate um at least looking at uh the cove irrigation this winter um is where we put it on high on the list, and we could spread it out from there, however you, however you need to do it, Charlie.
To the next level, does that mean we can have to charge more for that per portion of the?
All of the above. I mean, from, from a presentation quality, uh charge more, just overall, uh where we're known in, in, in the community, although we're, 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 we're known as a very, very good facility right now, and it's doing really well. There's, there's, there, there is another level um of presentation, and so that would take care of that. But obviously, we put that as a B need, we, 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 we'll still be in business if, if we don't do it. So, but it, 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 we feel it's important um for a bring, for the folks coming into the city to play the golf course and the residence. The cart, uh golf cart fleet, uh as we know, with our terrain and, and the battery life and, and the warranty lives, we, we are uh flipping the fleet every three years. Um so that, that is a, that is a loan, um that's done, that the golf course pays for. Uh we're due next year, next April, May, to flip the golf cart fleet again. We'll, we'll end it our third year uh with this fleet, which is hard to believe.
Seems like it was yesterday.
Yeah, it seemed like it was yesterday. So um, but obviously, that is, that's our number one uh, um moneymaker to the bottom line when, when we consider what we charge for, to what we have to pay for.
Credit for the, you know, the, when we return and-
Which we did last time, we were able to put a forty-five thousand dollar credit.
I mean, and we have, we have a four-year loan, a four-year again.
So five-year loan, five-year loan with twenty-nine oh four.
Yes, ma'am. And we're- Well, we only, we, 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 we only went out through uh twenty on this one, and our next, our next one will be in twenty-one. But in future planning for it, yes, every, every three years, that same, that same number. We are requesting a, a s- uh seven additional golf carts. Uh just from a demand standpoint, which is a good thing, the golf course is very, very busy, and we're getting lots of usage, lots of demand. We can use um some more golf carts.
Are those, any of those gonna be beer carts?
We do, we do have a beverage cart. That, that uh the new food and beverage department will be uh, uh utilizing uh on the golf course. So ball washer, uh golf ball washer, golf ball dispensing machine, and they put those two together, it's really the two at the practice facility. Um it's not on the golf course, it's really the big machine that we use to, to clean all the range balls um and to dispense them uh to the, to the, to the golfers utilizing in the facility. And that's just a, a replacement um of old equipment. Yeah. Practice tee expansion, um and, and again, this is another, uh because of the use of the facility, the outings, the events, the, the daily play, we are on the grass part of the tee three days out of the seven days. Uh we just don't have the capacity, the, the grass just gets tore up and beat up as people hit more range balls and warm up. And also, the, the mat area is on the front part of the tee. We would like to expand the tee, move the mats to the back part of the tee, 'cause when we're overseeding and we're spraying chemicals, right now, everybody has to walk through the grass part that we've just um applied chemicals to, treated to, or put overseed down. So we would like to, if we do this project, to move all the mats to the back. But to give us more teen space, more square footage, again, just to uh boost the overall uh quality level and the usage. Right now, it's just to, we would like to be on the grass part of, of, of the facility seven days a week, and not three, we just don't have the, the, the grass space to do it right now. Um so that is a moneymaker up, and I'm sorry, the golf carts were, were a priority A. The ball washer and dispensing were both priority A as well. The practice tee expansion, we put as a B, uh simply that we, we have one and it's being used. Um we feel like it could be better, but we, we put it as a B. Uh the next phase of the laser level Ts is, is right below that. And below that one is to renovate, and this is a, this is a priority C on our list, but we wanted it on there as a renovate hole thirteen, which is by far the, if we get a complaint on the golf course, it's on hole thirteen, the way it's, it, it's um shaped and the way it was designed, the fairway tilts. I'm not sure what the, the degree is, but if you hit your shot straight down the middle on that golf hole, you're getting up in the right rough. And so the way to play the hole, the way it's designed, and because of the way it's sloped, the golfer has to, has to try to carry the bunker, which is on the left-hand side, which is hard for most people to do. So we would like to, to regrade that whole landing area, move the bunker to the right-hand side of the fairway as protection of going out of bounds and into the rough, and let golfers play up the left-hand side, which would be a much better angle. So um it's just a redesign of that hole from a vast majority of golfers that come back and say, if there's one hole they don't like, it's number thirteen.
Just to understand how, so I guess you guys do a lot of this in-house?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what are the expenses associated with this then? You have the, you need to rent equipment to do the?
Yeah, this one, this one, we would, we would contract out for, for this one, we would need to contract this out. Uh but it, it's, it's moving irrigation, drainage, bunker sand, um sod, all that would go into that, but the grading part of it in there, we would contract out to get some help to make sure it's, it's done correctly if we're gonna do it. it's, it's done correctly if we're gonna do it. And cart path replacement and all of the above. The maintenance shop exterior, um, and Chuck can, really from the whole compound down there, it's, 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 it's in need of repair. Um, the, the building is, it's, it is safe, right? But it is, has a, a, a tremendous amount of wear and tear, rotten wood. Um, it, it just, it just need, it just needs repairing. We put on here right after that, expanding of the cart staging area. Again, this just goes back to, um, the, the, the level of play that we're getting, the amount of tournaments we're getting, the, um, the usage from the restaurant on, on functions and, and during the night. But right now we're on a, on multiple big events, on multiple days, the staging area's not big enough. We're having to stage on the grass, um, and that's great when it's dry. Um, but when the wear and tear on that part, if we're gonna do it, we would like to do it, the practice facility and the staging area all at one time where we could fix it the way it needs to be and give us the capacity that we need to stage all the golf carts to do the events that we're doing, to do the member functions and to have the, the functions that are coincide with the restaurant too.
What's a great, interesting problem to have, isn't it?
It is a good problem to have.
The conversations we've had before.
Course signage replacement is really just to bring the signage up to a much better quality. Right now we have a kind of a baskin' robins of signs. We have metal signs that have golf ball dents in them. We have, um, composite signs that are broken. Uh, we fix them when we can, but it's just the, the, the presentation is, is not to the standard of the golf course. And so we would like to replace the signage around there, uh, directional signage and hole signage, um, to be a much better quality and a much better, um, uh, life than the signs that we have now, which, uh, are not lasting very long. The, all of the other, um, everything else on the list is, uh, greens mower, fairway unit, which is two, greens tee mower, greens covers, which is for the Maine Eighteen. Um, we had greens covers above, which was for the Cove, the, the, um, croquet and the, the chipping green. Tractor and the dump trailer are all part of a, of, of a equipment package that will be replacing the package that we just, that you all approved for us. Thank you. This year we'll be paying that package off and replacing that equipment with these, these pieces, um, as the way it's scheduled. And that's it.
Any questions for golf?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Come see us.
Mayor, any general conversations, comments from the group before we circle back around on fire?
Jen? Ryan? Dottie?
Yeah?
Pay attention.
I am.
You got any, uh, questions, demonstrations, the manifestations of violence?
I don't, sir.
David? Jerry, you wanna poll your folks?
I can poll them.
No, but it was, it's good information, we didn't have.
Is the question specifically about the golf or?
Overall thing.
Overall, is there a tally, a summary of all of these? If we, if everything was improved a hundred percent, we could save this down where we could get full bottom line total.
If you look at page, bottom of page seven?
Yeah, there.
That's everything except for golf. And the reason we pull golf out separately, and we could've done this with multiple departments as far as it being enterprise funds and things like that. Basically, everything except for golf, we felt like were a service to the, to the resident, to the customer versus golf is really something that's luxury, I guess is maybe the right word for it. It's not a, it's not a citizen's service provided by the city. It's an entity, um, an asset that we own. We still need to maintain it, still need to keep it up, but, so that's kinda how we spread, that's, that's the reason for the difference. So if you look at the bottom of page seven, you've got a running tally, um, and then you've got the same thing on the golf, um, back on their page. Obviously we've got a couple of updates, um, you know, some cleanup work we need to do. We'll be working with Karen Autumn on those, um, and then putting together an ordinance. Um, council would need to adopt this by ordinance. Um, and then we would bring amendments every year as part of the budget process.
But this estimate that you have here of nineteen million dollars is not?
Not all of it, it's general fund.
Some bonds. Right, but that needs to be broken out as well.
What's that?
What's from the general fund, what's from Beach and Swim Center, what's from T-Cud? The nineteen million dollars?
You've got, you've got it down below the nineteen million.
Okay.
But we can tighten it up a little bit, yes.
Yeah.
We can tighten it up.
A lot.
Doug, you got anything?
No, I think he's a good job.
Mary?
No.
I'd like to thank Karen Autumn for their efforts and their work. I'd like to thank my department heads that are still here.
Thank you.
With us for their efforts and work on this. Um, we'll continue to clean this up, get a final version back out or a more final version, hopefully back out to everybody, um, here in the next week or so. And once you get it and you've got, and you've gone through it, please send us back comments. Um, you know, turn them back around to us. Um, Mayor, do we want, does planning commission need to stick around for this stuff or can we dismiss them or?
No, I don't think planning commission needs to stick around, but here's the question that I have. Have we lost everyone? We're getting ready to go through the, um, fire department and what fire departments?
It's just a concern to the fire station.
Right. Have we lost council?
Meaning, aren't we tired?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're tired.
So then?
But I, I, I only speak for me.
Twenty minutes more?
If, if that.
All right.
If that.
Can we take a five-minute break for all of us? And then council come back for another twenty minutes? For the record, Councilman Hershey did join us at six eighteen, um, and she has been here for the entire time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Glad I made it.
All right, go ahead, Charlie. It's up to you.
All right, um, at our last council meeting, council did, um, approve first read on the funding for the fire station. As your bond attorney has, uh, has told you, you can go with a lower amount, um, it, uh, prior to second read. So basically what I've done is put together a little bit more detail for you. The first sheet, that's just black and white, no highlights on it, is a list of the furnishings. Um, that question came up, um, with, uh, with you, Jen, as far as what do we find, what do, what, what are the furnishings? What are we putting in here? So there's a list. Uh, you've got your beds, desk, nightstands, lockers, air compressor. You can see the biggest expense is the SCBA air compressor. That's so they can refill the tanks. Um, we do have one of those at fire station number one. It is owned by the volunteers. Um, this would put one, uh, a city-owned one, um, in, in the other station, uh, to allow us to be able to refill those tanks. Um, is it a overwhelming pressing need, uh, on that? It's probably a.
Scott, would you do me a favor? Would you join us here?
Yeah. The conversation that Scott and I've had is if we're gonna do it, probably ought to do it now versus, you know, four, five, six years down the road.
The compressor?
Yeah, the, the, yes, ma'am, the air compressor, SCBA. It's a forty-five thousand dollar expense. Uh, it, it is a big nugget, uh, compared to everything else on the page. It's, it's a little over half of all the other furnishing expenses. Um, we do have quotes, uh, and pricing on all of this, uh, information Scott and, uh, Warren Lewis, um, have put together, uh, and I definitely appreciate, uh, the efforts they put in there. Now, I wanna transition over to the other page, the use of funds sheet that I gave you. So, um, basically it's exactly what you saw previously, just reordered, if that makes sense. Um, yeah, I think Jen brought up a good point. Uh, Mayor, you called me, um, and had, had a lot of, uh, similar ideas. Does it make sense to fund these things for fifteen years? Such as the testing and special inspection for soils, architect fees, civil engineering fees, structural fees, furnishings. So, and we even threw the new fire engine in there. Now, one thing that I did show was the ten percent contingency being in the cash funding portion, that's that highlighted, uh, piece there. Or ver, or up in the bond amount. I will tell you that as you look at the soils contingency, you got two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in soil contingency, okay? We may not use it, okay? If, if the soils, as they bring it out to start re-compacting, okay? Based on where we've done the test bores, it appears to be clean, good dirt. It just has not been compacted properly. So it would excavate it to nine-foot depths and then re-compact it in six to eight-inch lifts. Good. The two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars is in there so that if they have to take that soil out and it's not usable and they have to bring new soil in, okay? That's what the two-eighty covers, okay? That's a worst-case scenario type, type deal. So we could quote-unquote fund the ten percent contingency of a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand with cash if it's needed, or we can put that amount into the, the amount that we are borrowing on the GO bond. If we don't use it, that amount goes towards your first, your first payments. And keep in mind, your first three years, if you'll recall the, um, the debt schedule that we showed you last month, your first three years is interest, okay? And then your last twelve is level debt service, all right? So you put a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand in there, I think the interest payments were about thirty-six thousand. Basically it's paying your first three years. Yeah, you're paying it out of the bond proceeds that you ended up not using, but you can repay that way, okay? So it's really a matter of, you know, you can borrow one seven, uh, one-point-seven-two or you can add, you, you, basically you'd be borrowing about one-point-nine. And then the rest will be funded through, uh, through cash, uh, from our cash reserves. What I would need from council is which way do you wanna go so that I can put this back to Paul Truce so that they can update the, um, the budget, um, the bond budget to show the, the right, um, the right funding scales and whatnot to bring back to you for your second read?
Still a fifteen-year?
Still be bank placed, still fifteen years.
What's the motion that we have? Do we know how much that money was?
It was, yeah.
Two-point-six?
I believe it was, I believe it was the two-point-six. Um, yeah. You funded the entire full amount. So anything under that, you're fine with? As far as not having to go back for a, a new first read. Based on what our contractor has told us, oh, speaking of, uh, backtrack real quick, site sign allowance, I removed that item. Uh, the one at City Hall, we were able to fund with, uh, H-tax funds. What we can do, I mean, we put it in there because previous councils have long said, how do we put, you know, same information over there, you know, on the eastern side of town like we have over here by City Hall? Well, this was the way we identified and been able to do it. We could fund this later with H-tax funds, uh, just like we did the one at City Hall. Um, the, the base bid does include wiring out to the point, so it would be stubbed out ready so that when we, yeah, if we don't wanna do it now, we wanna do it a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, we could, we could fund that a different way. So that I, I highlighted it just to show that I did pull that out, uh, that fifteen-thousand-dollar amount out. My recommendation would be to not fund the ten percent, uh, the ten percent contingency based on, uh, conversations I've had with the contractor, uh, based on the soils report we got back, uh, from a third-party independent contractor. Um, leave that out and fund it with cash if we need to. So that way you're reducing the amount you're borrowing and just because it's showing on the cash portion there, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna have to spend that. Without that, you're, without that, you're at about six-fifty-one in cash. Give or take.
To fund.
Mm-hmm.
Fund with cash.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Which is where we were before.
Six-fifty, yes, ma'am. Let's see.
So it doesn't really change. You're just changing the what?
Just changing, it's showing specifically, here's what's cash, here's what's, here's what's funded, instead of here's everything that needs to be funded, this much would be cash, this much would be bond. It's showing specific, here's what we're gonna pay for. So basically the construction of the firehouse would be through your bond. The furnishings, the fire truck, all the engineering fees and things like that, you wouldn't be financing those for fifteen years. You pay cash up, you pay cash for those in year one.
Basically, we were, we're, we're paying cash for the things that aren't gonna last fifteen years.
Correct, yes. With the exception of the fire truck. The fire truck, you, I mean, you would typically finance that, but you could pay, I mean, under the scenarios, using the same type parameters that I've discussed with council from a funding standpoint in the past, you could pay cash for it.
How are we gonna, so the plan is now to pay cash for the fire truck?
It would be included in the items that we would pay cash for, yes. So if we didn't spend the ten percent contingency, you'd be spending six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars out of, out of your cash reserves.
Which is what, three something right now?
You're about three-point-two, yes, sir. By end of budget year, end of this fiscal year, you're between three-two and three-four.
And that's a comfortable amount to have for a rainy day fund for, for, you know, a hurricane.
I don't know how hard it rains.
Better we were, than we were.
Well, let me put it to you this way. Several years ago, we had a sewer line break underneath Hunter's Run Drive. People that live on Hunter's Run remember it. We, it took us about fourteen days to excavate and fix because the line was buried forty-feet deep and we had to use contractors to, to fix this thing. Uh, we were running pumper trucks seven, um, twenty-four hours a day for two weeks straight. Um, and that entire expense, including rebuilding the road, was seventy-five thousand dollars. That was a pretty catastrophic thing. Now, it's not on the level of hugo by any stretch. Um, but, you know, I mean, you'd like to think that a category four hurricane coming through the Charlotte areas, a once-in-a-lifetime type opportunity. Knock wood, but, um, yeah, it's, your, your financial advisors, your financial director and myself feel very comfortable at the levels that, that would still be remaining. Um, you're not fully depleting your eight percent, um, borrowing limit. Uh, you've still got a, a healthy portion there. Um, and each year that portion just gets higher as we pay down debt and as our assessments continue to grow.
I mean, how do we look at this in light of what we just discussed, which is not saying take the fire station off the table by any means, but there were a lot of things presented tonight that are needs, some of them shorter term.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them pretty costly. The aggregate of them is pretty high.
Other than, um, your Windhaven Park, Kataba Park, potential police station, um, a lot of those things you're looking at as, um, financing options, more so than out of your, um, your allowable, um, eight percent debt limit. Um, there's a lot of items in there that are handled through the budgeting process. Um, you know, as, as far as not really impacting, I mean, now, the things that would impact, you know, Kataba Park, Windhaven Park, new police station potentially, um, I mean, those are, those aren't small-ticket items either. I mean, those are, those are, those are big items, absolutely. And it's my job and my, my team's job to figure out the best way for us to be able to do that and bring that information to you.
My opinion, if you built a house, you'd finance a house. You built a car, you'd finance a car. So if you take as a resident, you know, as, as a household budget, I'd like to take that approach to this. Finance the fire station, finance the truck. Everything else we pay cash for. So then it becomes two-point-one, two-three.
So you'd move the four-hundred up into the top? Good.
That's my opinion.
Seems like it's gonna be cheap money. It is gonna be cheap money.
Less than three. Less than three percent.
I mean, I can live with that. I, I don't finance cars, but.
It still gives us the option, it still gives us the option if.
We need.
God forbid, we need tomorrow.
We have a little bit.
To go for a fire, for a police station.
I mean, what's our money earning? Three-quarters of one percent or?
What's, what's it earning just sitting in the bank? Not, not a whole lot.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
Fund, fund the contingency, fund the, the furnishings.
And the fees.
The architectural fees, the civil engineering fees, finance the engine and finance the station.
Well, the contingency is to take out all of the.
Well, if we need it, if, if we need it, we, if we need the contingency, we would pay it out of the general fund.
Out of the cash, the cash reserves, okay.
I'm looking at the four hundred thousand, what is that based on? Cause I know it says new, but you're saying that you're looking for a demo, so does it mean new to you versus new overall? Is this a worst-case scenario?
No, that's, it is worst-case scenario because that's our budget.
Okay.
Okay, so I can go, I can go over that very easily, like the engine that we bought, last engine we bought was five hundred and fifty thousand. But the ladder truck was a demo, it was seven hundred and eighty thousand. I got it for five fifty, five twenty-five. It's brand-new, it had, they call it a demo, had less than a thousand miles on it. I had to let him use it to show a couple of other departments.
Chief, didn't you say Daytona Beach just bought one that had all the bells and whistles, same exact truck for four hundred?
Daytona Beach, um, has everything on it, air packs and everything, and they're, they're selling them off. Not Daytona Beach, Daytona racetrack.
Ah.
So they're used twice a year, basically. And, um, they just, they have like three hundred miles on them. And he's coming back with me with the quotes on what they have available. And if it's, you know, if it's reasonable, we'll go that way. They've got one that's got everything on it and, you know, they want five hundred for it, but they've got another one that they sold for two eighty-nine. If I can get one for two eighty-nine, it'll serve our purpose. It's only got a couple thousand miles on it and all the bells and whistles, we'll take it. But I don't need all the bells and whistles. I just need a basic truck to take it. I need a siren. I have a siren. But there, but there's certain things, NFPA standards that all fire trucks come with.
So. You all right with that, two-point-one?
I'm okay.
Ryan, you good?
We're not voting.
Is it still two-point-one?
It's two-point-one, two-three. No, the contingency we take out of our cash.
So I'll bring it, I'll, uh, I'll get with, um, Paul Truce. We'll update the, uh, the bond ordinance. Um, I'll shoot him a note tomorrow and, uh, we'll bring it back to you.
Will, will interest be locked in there?
No, you won't have interest until, once y'all finalize your, um, once y'all take final vote, at that point, then they advertise, they start shopping it to the banks and lowest interest rates gonna win.
The Fed's gonna raise the interest rate.
So, we'll abs, we'll absolutely come back and let you know what that is, uh, probably by your July meeting. Be able to let you know exactly what the interest rate is.
What was that?
I think the Fed, isn't the Fed gonna hire the interest rate? I feel like, no, but I mean, I think they're really gonna do it in June, which means that the other interest rates will climb too. I don't know how fast and I don't know how much.
Well, if that starts getting, you know, more legs underneath it, there's nothing that says that we can't do a second read in June, the end of June.
Well, you'd be doing second read at June twentieth, but you could do a special meeting.
Oh, we already did first read, you're right.
Yeah, you already did first read.
Ask Paul.
You could do a special read at any point.
Ask Paul or ask somebody. Paul, I guess, he keeps his, keeps track on it. I mean, if the Fed really raises the interest rate, how quickly would other interest rates follow? What are they?
Immediately.
You know, what are they, yeah, what are they talking about?
We're talking about five percent, so I'm too big?
I mean, Paul would need, if I notified Paul with this information this week, you could potentially, if council wanted to, you could do a special council meeting, second read by next week. He'd have it ready, so, but I will almost certainly ask the question.
Question to ask, I mean, if we're gonna, if speeding up our voting gets us in under.
But I, but I don't, because we all agree, I mean, I'm okay with if you do, um, my meeting without me for that purpose. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Uh, where are you going?
Going to my mother's house. She's selling her house and going into a Wellmore in Texas.
Oh, boy.
I'm known about this, well, it's not bad. She's, she's feisty, I think.
Thank you for, um, taking these questions.
Yes, no, not a problem, not a problem. Thank you for the questions, cause it definitely helps me look at things differently.
Happy to do it.
You got that, Katie, Dottie, Jen? We're adjourned.
Thank you.